Also broadcast on CNET. Live on the YouTube channel and then it will be replayed on Channel 7. Looks like we're just waiting on Mr. Mitra. Hello to everybody on the conference bridge. I think we've got a couple that have dialed in.
Hi.
Hello. Oh, that sounds like Jeremy Thompson.
I have a question, Jeremy.
Oh, no, it's Wes.
Yeah, it's Wes.
Hi, Wes.
The video is not on. Is there a reason for that?
The video for attendees, like for, you know, correct. Yeah, that's, this is a webinar format and I'll review some of the logistics here after we call it to order.
Okay, great.
Yep, no problem. Sure. Oh, here's Prasangita is on as an attendee. I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote him to panelist here.
I was just gonna ask you to check that.
Yeah, yeah, I am, you know, fortunately I'm able to do that. I know I sent out a little bit late the invitations for panelists. So, looks like I can, looks like we got everybody here now.
Okay. So I will go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, October, or Wednesday, September 2020. This will be a one topic meeting on the stormwater utility fee as a special meeting. And I will ask Dave to go through the processes and procedures for this specific meeting and then we'll introduce the topic after that.
Okay, I will indeed do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to everybody, especially board members, staff and the consultants and the public. Who have joined us for tonight's special meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. This meeting's been advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual meeting conducted using the Zoom telemeeting platform. If you are joining this evening as a member of the public, there's two ways to offer comment or to ask questions when acknowledged by the chairman. First, questions and comments can be submitted by using the Q and A feature at the bottom of the screen. So if you just click on the Q and A feature, you can type your question or your comment in. Text entered will only be visible to panelists until they're answered. So I'm going to relay the questions to the board at the appropriate time or to staff or the consultant, whomever is appropriate. Secondly, the township's conference bridge has been opened up and that can be accessed by dialing 814-238-4651 and entering extension 3799 when prompted. I'm going to kind of monitor the conference bridge and give participants an opportunity to ask questions or offer comment there at the appropriate time as well. Board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that our notes can accurately reflect the action taken. And I will, at this time, take a roll call, the Board of Supervisors, to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom telemeeting platform. Just please indicate you're here when your name is called. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Nini?
Here.
Mr. Mitra?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Okay, it looks like a quorum is present. Thank you very much. So tonight, the board is joined by staff and consultants, including David Modricker, Director of Public Works. Ron Seibert, our Township Engineer. Eric Anderson should be joining us either as a panelist or as an attendee momentarily, our Director of Finance. Elizabeth Treadway of Wood, representing our consulting team on this project. And in a moment, I'm going to turn things over to Dave Modricker to talk about the items that are included in the agenda. Prior to that, though, I'd like to offer just a few introductory comments and some acknowledgements as well. As the board knows, the work that's been done evaluating the feasibility and implementation of a stormwater management utility fee would not have been possible without the many hours of work of the ad hoc Stormwater Advisory Committee. Committee included representatives from men, from various stakeholders and industries in the township, as well as civil engineers, hydrogeologists. And representatives from the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County, homeowners associations and more. I would really like to convey our sincere appreciation to all those that put in the hours and were involved in that process in both phases and in some cases, we're there for both Phase 1 and Phase 2. Consideration of a stormwater management utility fee began in early 2017. With enabling legislation at the state level permitting certain classes of municipalities to assess a fee for stormwater management. Many communities around the state have already enacted or are currently enacting a fee to address their increased liabilities and costs tied to capital maintenance and improvements. Unfunded mandates from state and federal permit programs like our municipal separate storm source system permit. In frequency and increased frequency and intensity of rain events across the Northeast. At the time, when the board was considering embarking on a feasibility study, there were several variables taken into account to determine whether it was appropriate, given the circumstances. As you may know, the township has not implemented a general tax increase since 2006. Strong fund balances, good financial management and steady growth have enabled us to respond to increased demands on public expenditures without the need for a tax increase. This streak, while certainly a point of pride for our community, is untenable. While we are in a good financial position, our modeling shows that this position will be jeopardized in the coming, coming years. In the public sector, our options for improving our financial stability are limited, frankly, to cutting expenditures, raising taxes or finding new means of generating revenue. And it was in this context that the stormwater fee feasibility study was initially proposed. It's important to note now that it's not staff or the consultants' roles to advocate either for or against a fee. Fiscal policy established by the elected, is established by the elected officials with advice and input from our professional staff. A prospective stormwater utility fee provides a mechanism for equity and accountability that a general tax increase does not. First, it can be based on the demand created by development for a public system to manage runoff and reduce risk to citizens and their property using impervious area as a meter. This can be credited based on what a property owner is doing to mitigate runoff on his or her property. By basing the fee on a percentage of impervious or impenetrable surface, those who contribute more to the need for the stormwater management system would be charged a larger fee. Similarly, all properties are subject to assessment under a stormwater fee, including otherwise taxed exempt organizations like Penn State University or the township itself. Next, the level of service is scalable, meaning the program can be adjusted to recognize the unique topography, infrastructure and characteristics of the township's 52 square mile thumbprint. As the board saw in an earlier presentation, this has been presented as dividing the township into two service areas. One fee structure would apply to urbanized areas where significant infrastructure, including stormpipes, basins and complex conveyance systems are present. And another fee structure would apply to the rural areas whose stormwater management infrastructure is not as complex or is costly to maintain and replace. And finally, the cost centers under a proposed stormwater fee can be segregated from the general fund. By this, I mean that we can ensure that all revenue from the fee will be used for its stated purpose, the maintenance and management of the township's stormwater program. This evening, the board is not being asked to consider or to decide whether or not to enact a stormwater management utility fee. There are several items that Dave Modricker will review momentarily that are policy decisions which must be made before an ordinance can be presented for public hearing. It's our goal to be able to finalize these details this evening and to be able to communicate to residents and property owners what the proposed fee would look like for their individual applications. This information, coupled with the expansive outreach and education efforts the township has undertaken over the last three years. Should give residents the tools they need to fully understand the impact of this proposal and why it is being considered. Ultimately, when the board is tasked with making this decision, it is our goal that everyone impacted would have at least had an opportunity to learn about this proposed fee. This is undoubtedly more challenging, given the climate that we currently are in. The COVID-19 pandemic has limited our ability to host in-person meetings since late spring. Despite this hurdle, I am confident that the public has been adequately informed and given opportunities to provide comment or ask questions throughout the process since it began in 2017. That is why, after careful consideration of the consequences of each option, we are recommending that the board continue this process and host a public hearing on an ordinance to establish the fee. In doing so, staff will be able to prepare for the coming fiscal years to account for the fee if enacted. Or pursue alternatives that can hopefully provide the financial stability and resource, resource management needed to continue to meet our obligations under our stormwater program. I hope this has given the board and the public a general understanding and comprehension of the actions that were taken to date. I'll now ask Dave Modricker to review the agenda narrative and introduce the items on which staff is seeking input and direction from the board this evening.
Dave, before we do that, I'd just like to make briefly go over how I intend to run the meeting, the process here. Because this is a webinar format. People will not be interacting with the normal Zoom meeting. They'll be sending questions in. What I'm proposing to do is start with Dave Modricker and have staff and the consultant present any information, particularly things, what action items would be requested of us tonight and information about questions that we had raised previously. I'll then allow us or ask the board to ask specific questions about, you know, information questions, not discussion of what we should be doing, but if there is information that you feel we need before we proceed into the discussion. Ask the, ask those questions of the staff and the consultant. Then I will open it up for questions from the public, which will be submitted through the chat feature. I'm going to reserve the right to limit the time on that, but it will be, if we have questions that take an hour, I will allow at least an hour for the questions. Following that. I'll go back to any other questions that the board has. And then we will start the board discussion on the, specifically the four items that Dave has identified as bullet points. Any discussion on other items that the board would like to discuss in terms of preparing an ordinance for us to consider at a public hearing? And then ask, as we go through that, I will ask for motions on those items and then at the end. If the board is, feels we're ready to go into a public hearing, I'll ask for motion to schedule a public hearing. So we'll start with Dave Modricker introducing the topic and answering the questions that have been asked before. And proceed from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, board members and attendees. I am going to share my screen. Can you see the share screen? Okay, so as Dave and Steve mentioned, this is not a comprehensive review of the program. I put together about 27 slides to go through rather quickly. To give you some information on the items that I believe you're going to discuss tonight, as well as some reference information that we might want to go back to. So those four items that I believe we're discussing tonight are the use of a equivalent residential unit versus a square footage method for billing. Funding the pipe lining program either through the Transportation Improvement Fund or the Stormwater Fee. The purchase of equipment. And a credit policy. So once again, the ERU is the average or the mean of the impervious area measured in square feet of all residential properties. Another method is using a unit of 1,000 square feet. You've seen this slide before. This is a example. You see on the left, under the ERU method. One single family home has a, has a one billing unit. And that is 3,097 square foot is the mean or the average. A parcel with an impervious area of 80,000 square feet under this method would be assessed 26 ERUs. So that's one way of billing. Another way of billing is using increments of 1,000 square foot. That same residential unit under this method gets three billing units. The parcel with 80,000 square feet gets 80 billing units. 80,000 divided by 1,000. We also discussed the fact that in the non-growth area, there was a method of assigning allocating impervious area on a parcel that has both an agricultural use and a residence. Impervious area that is necessary to driveway regardless how long it is to the house, to the residential portion. And the rest to the ag. It makes no difference under 1,000 square foot method, does make a difference under an ERU method. We can come back to these, but they're in the slide deck. If we want to refer to them, those are the two examples that were provided at your last presentation. Second item I think we want to talk about tonight, and my plan was just to go through these, introduce you to them, show you the information I have for reference and then, you know, let you discuss. So, you know, how do we pay for pipe rehabilitation or pipe lining? So the pipe lining we do on deteriorated corrugated metal pipe after inspections, prior to paving a road. Funded through our Transportation Improvement Fund. A few years ago, we started proactively inspecting, cleaning and lining pipes, not necessarily associated with a particular road, but knowing that we have an issue that needs to be addressed. So the question before the board tonight is, should we continue to line these pipes? Do this pipe repair that's not associated with a road paving project? Using the Transportation Improvement Fund as we currently do, using the stormwater fee as proposed. Or transitioning it over time from the current method of funding it in the TIF to the stormwater fee. We have about 33 miles of pipe in our right of way, 16 of which is corrugated metal. There's an additional amount of mileage that is private. Some of it's commingled with water that comes, you know, from public. And then we have over 2,300 inlets that we maintain. There's more than that when you include the private, just to give you a sense of the, you know, the size of the system. So what pipe lining costs are currently included in the stormwater fee? Currently, we have proposed lining about 5,000 feet a year at $100 a foot. So that's close to half a million dollars. That's significant. That's why we're talking about it. So the other thing we wanted to talk about tonight is how we want to handle equipment. We can either buy equipment or we can contract out the services. But what equipment is it we're talking about? Whenever we need to assess the condition of a stormpipe, we use a camera on a crawler. That is with the camera lowered down into an inlet. Then a wire and cable is used to pull it through the system after it's been cleaned. An operator sits in a vehicle typically, it could be a van, it could be a truck. And the condition of the pipe is recorded on video as the operator advances the camera through the truck and documents the condition of the pipe. That type of equipment comes in various sizes and shapes and varies in cost. The other major piece of equipment that's used to clean a stormpipe system and these same systems are used on sanitary systems as well as storm systems. Is a vacuum truck. Or a vac truck. So it's used to suck sludge and slurry and debris out of stormpipe systems and out of inlets. It has a large vacuum tank. Often, and as we would suggest, there is a high pressure pump and water tank. Here, the reel is on the front of the truck. That hose is put down into the inlet into the pipe system and I use the term pressure wash. It basically blows that sediment into slurry. That then gets sucked up by your pump. As it evacuates the air and brings that slurry into the tank. Again, they come in different sizes. The one that is proposed in the program is on a tandem frame. It has a 10 cubic yard box. About 1,000 gallon water tank. And you can see what the price of a vehicle such as that is. So we can come back to these slides in the future. They were provided to you in your previous presentation. But this is a graphical representation of what I'm about to show you. This, this is symbology. So if we're lining pipes. This symbol on the graph you're about to see symbolize maintaining that pipe lining in the TIF. This symbol says funded through the stormwater fee. This symbol's used to show that we're going to transition that funding over time. Then we have orange symbology with checks and an X. Indicating with the equipment that I just mentioned, whether the plan includes purchasing the equipment. Or we don't purchase and we continue to contract out that service that's shown with an X. I described those because these are the different scenarios that were ran. And these lines graphically represent the limits of a potential fee based on the ERU option. The dark line would be a non-growth area. And the light blue would be in the growth area. So you can So you can see how the range of fees are bracketed depending on whether you purchase equipment, contract it, pay for pipe lining in the TIF, pay for it in the stormwater fee or transition it over time. And again, we can come back to these. I have them available. I'm showing you, um, this same graph using a 1,000 square foot as a billing unit option. And, and again, these are all going to be available throughout your discussion tonight. I want to show you what, what I've prepared as background information as you discuss the different options. And then the fourth item that I believe the board wants to talk about tonight is credits. Advisory committee, I'll just use the term, uh, was split and did have some strong opinions on whether or not to, um, have a credit program or not have a credit program. If we do have a credit program, you know, categories could include education and engagement, post-construction stormwater management, low impact development, agricultural business operations. And then this table that we can come back and look at again, talks about who might be eligible for the types of credits, what the criteria might be, and then a discussion on how much, um, of the fee should be credited. So, so really that's my quick presentation. I, I do want to show you some additional information that I have available for you or for attendees in, in the future. So posted on our webpage, there is a listing that has, uh, tax parcel numbers, total impervious area in square footage, and, uh, a calculation of what the ERU or the billing unit would be. Also posted on our webpage is a tabular, um, a, a table that shows the program elements. Uh, so if you wanted to say, well, what particular element? Well, you were talking about an equipment operator. When were you thinking about hiring him? Well, you'd look at this chart and you'd come over and you'd say, well, in year FY27 is when we're planning and that's how the, uh, funding is built for the fee. So this is kind of at a snap, you know, look at those elements at a snapshot. I, I don't expect you to be able to read all this on the screen. Again, it's a resource available on the webpage, but it's kind of an overview of the totals of the operating costs and the capital costs by fiscal year that are built into the program. Additional information if you need it tonight, a tabular, uh, form of the graph showing, uh, those, um, rates. Cost allocation by growth area, non-growth area, uh, the actual growth area map. So that is the end of my, uh, presentation. Just wanted to provide you that information before you began your discussions. And I can stop sharing my screen at this point and bring this back up whenever you like.
Okay. So the, the first thing I would do is if board members have any questions for Dave related to what he just presented, this is not a discussion of, you know, any specific items at this time, but just clarification items. Uh, this will be the time to do that. Okay. Doesn't look like we have any, uh, specific questions. I'm sure there will be plenty of general questions coming up later. So at this point I will go to public comment. Again, the public comment is not like a regular Zoom meeting where you pop up on the screen. It will be sent by chat and Dave will be monitoring that and passing questions to, uh, questions for the staff or the consultant will answer right now. Uh, you know, if you have a, a question of information for staff or the consultant, if you have questions or comments for the board, uh, those will be part of the board discussion. We'll, we will read them. We will receive your comments, but we aren't going to respond to them as a board at this time. So if Dave, if you could manage that, that'd be good.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So the first question we have, uh, is as follows. Patent Township received their 2020 to 2025 uh, MS4 permit and has their pollutant reduction requirements extended to a 2025 deadline? The fee is to fund projects to implement the 10% reduction, correct? And if so, why is town, the Ferguson Township looking to create a fee now instead of looking towards an extension like Patent Township did? I think I, I would ask Ron if you can address some of that. I, uh, you may have a higher, more familiarity with that.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll discuss the permit part of it. Um, so Patent Township, Ferguson Township, State College Borough, College Township and Harris Township, uh, we all received their permits at the same time. They were all delayed from when DEP anticipated issuing them. So we all received them this year in 2020. And we all have until 2025 to meet the requirements of the permit with respect to our, uh, pollutant reduction requirement. So that timeline that Patton has is consistent in the same with Ferguson and all the other municipalities.
Yes, thank you. So I, I think it's, I, I think it's maybe just a little bit of a misunderstanding of what that extension meant. Really frankly, you know, we, we had submitted our, our pollutant reduction plan, uh, jointly, although we are all responsible for that 10% reduction. Um, the, the proposed fee would certainly in part cover the capital expenses associated with, uh, the, um, restoration of stream banks and the other projects that the township is obligated to under our MS4 program, uh, but that's just one component of it. And Dave mentioned a few others, including, um, stormpipe relining, other kinds of, uh, capital maintenance and equipment, assessment of our current infrastructure, et cetera. Uh, secondly, the, um, question is, will the maintenance and upkeep of individual basins owned by homeowners associations become the responsibility of the township? I'll take a, I'll take a first crack at this one and then the supporting cast can, can fill in the blanks if I've missed anything. Um, initially in the, in the discussions with the stormwater advisory committee and the board at the time, there was consideration given to the township, assuming all responsibility for privately owned stormwater basins and other best management practice, practices. Uh, initially that, um, conversation kind of evolved to, uh, you know, kind of concerned about what that, what that would look like, what the cost would be. It really ballooned the program, um, fairly significantly. And ultimately the stormwater advisory committee recommended against, uh, the township assuming responsibility for those privately owned stormwater basins. So under the program that's proposed, those basins that are privately owned would still be the obligation of either the property owner or the, uh, homeowners association or the condo association. But in an effort to recognize that some of those stormwater facilities are treating public and upstream runoff, uh, the model was proposed and is, is presented that there would be a cost share between the township and the private interest, whether it be a private property owner or homeowners or a condo association that was proportional based on the amount of runoff that was treated from public sources. So in other words, if a homeowners association had a big sinkhole developed or there was some other issue that was observed on an inspection, we would be, and, and part of that sink or part of that stormwater basin was treating public runoff from upstream development or public right of way. We would be, we would calculate what that proration would be. So if it was half of the runoff it was treating came from public sources and the other half was internal to the development, there would be a 50% cost share for the maintenance and repair of whatever that stormwater facility would be. Um, and so that's, that's the model that's been presented to help alleviate some of those costs, which can be quite significant uh, for the repair and capital upkeep of some of those, uh, stormwater facilities. There are other potential applications that the fee may enable, including, you know, either grant funding or, or, you know, uh, small or, or low or no interest loans that could help. Uh, those have not been baked into the program as presented, but those are considerations that can be made for future applications to help to alleviate some of the private homeowners or, or homeowners associations, uh, cost obligations in association with that particular facility. Does anybody else have any, um, comments or clarifying things to add? Anything I've misrepresented? Oh, Wes, I hear you. Can you just give me one second? I just want to, sorry, I'm, I'm. No? Did I, did I hit it on the head? All right. Thanks. Um, Wes, go ahead. If you, I'm going to, I'm going to turn you up. This is, I'm going to try to get this both, uh, going here. Go ahead.
My question is about buying and sharing CCTV trucks uh, between the different townships in order to reduce the cost.
Yeah. Well, so the question is, I, I think Wes, tell me if I'm, if I'm representing this correctly. Hey, hey, Bill, I, I got you pretty loud here on the, on the ambient noise. He's not, he's not a soft spoken guy. He's, so, um, the question is, will, is there an opportunity for the township to either jointly purchase or to, um, share in the cost of some of this capital equipment like the vacuum truck and the CCTV truck and that sort of thing?
I can answer that.
Dave, yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, the stormwater advisory committee had some lengthy discussion on that and, um, Wes, Wes Gleeb was on the committee. So for, for the, for the rest of you that are, you know, attending and for the board, a bit of discussion on that matter. Currently, we contract out the service for cammering the pipes as well as, uh, cleaning the pipes. I would say a sustainable program would require either a continued, uh, contracting mechanism every year or a purchase of equipment. In terms of, you know, a clogged stormpipe here we're having issues with, yes, we can, and we have, you know, borrowed equipment. So that is, you know, possible to do here and there. Uh, I would not rely on borrowing for a sustainable program. Now, your real question, however, I think was what about purchasing and sharing equipment, uh, inter municipally? Uh, you know, we do have a council of governments. We do have cooperative agreements with other municipalities. It, it may be possible in the future if we could work out scheduling and logistics and funding and agreement that there may be another municipality that may be interested in, um, you know, participating, so to speak. But that's, that's not. Well, what's built into the program is contracting the service and then the purchase of equipment in a future year.
Thank you, Dave. Does anybody else have anything to add on to that response? I don't. Okay. Thanks, Wes. Uh, the next question is on, uh, through the chat is on page two of the cost spreadsheet. There's a property with 2,415 square feet that will be billed two billing units and another with 2,598 square feet that will be billed three billing units. If the actual numbers presumably a square foot of impervious are already available, why not use actual numbers instead of rounding to 2,000 and 3,000? Elizabeth, maybe that's a question for you? Or is it not?
Um, I'm assuming that's in the examples that we had used before.
The cost spreadsheet that's available on the website.
Yeah, there probably so many out there that, that my memory of all of them, I'm sorry, is probably not what it should be.
I think the real, I think the real question that's being asked, Elizabeth, is when we establish our fee, why are we rounding to the nearest thousand and not run out to the nearest square foot if we're actually that accurate? You know, I, I, I think it's, I think it's kind of, um, maybe it's common practice. I don't know that it couldn't be done, but I, I think typically, um, the square footage to the foot is rounded to some nearest unit and then that's converted billing unit. So.
Yeah. And, and I think importantly is the foundation of what is the billing unit, right? So for the ERU, the calculation as Dave has explained is based on that midpoint for all of the single family detached residential parcels. We had great data to be able to legitify that number. It is 3,097 feet. And that becomes the billing unit for everything that's not in that class of properties. So you have a very large billing unit at 3,097. So when you're using a fixed number like that, we round naturally up or down with a number that is proportional to it. So if you're at 3,600, it's rounded up to two. If you're at 3,100, it's rounded down to one. So it's in that process of how large is the billing unit? Now where you choose the thousand square foot billing unit, the rounding factor then hits at 1,500 or 500 up or down one billing unit. And that's the way the, the billing structure creating one unit equal to a value that the billing file and the calculation of billing units is created.
I mean, could we theoretically bill to the square foot? I, I would imagine we could, just like you do if you needed to for gallons of water used, but, um, for the, for the fee structure that's set up at the, I, I think based on discussion that we've had, we've, we've rounded it to the nearest thousand.
And, and we typically do not recommend that you go to a per square foot number. The tools that we use to measure imperviousness cannot give you that level of exactitude. A line drawn on a GIS map is already creating some distortion. The separation by the, um, parcel boundary lines on the map start to create some distortion. And rather than put the community into having to review down to a very costly analysis of individual parcels down to the precise square footage. That is simply precludes using a one square foot variable.
So we calculate it to the square foot in GIS, but based on accuracies of methodology, I think what Elizabeth is saying, it lends itself to rounding for billing purposes.
And to using larger billing units. So if someone changes something on their parcel, it has to be a fairly significant change before it would change their billing units.
Thank you. Uh, the next question from the, the Q and A is, um, what is the average financial impact of this fee to an individual household? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a stab at that one here and share my screen, particularly that slide that uh, Dave pulled up and just kind of walked through a, a little bit of it here. So what you see, or you should be able to see on your screen here is the slide that demonstrates the rates per equivalent residential unit with various options, funding the capital improvement program and meaning the stormpipe relining, et cetera, and equipment acquisition for fiscal years 2021 through 2028. So, and, and again, it kind of gets back to the symbology that Dave referenced earlier. What you see all the way on the left-hand side here would be if we were to not establish an equipment fund and to not, uh, use the, um, transportation improvement fund for our capital, uh, projects. Dave, do I have that right?
I believe yes.
Okay. So you can see the two growth areas here, and this is divided by a growth boundary. Uh, the reason for the, the proposal to divide the service areas between growth boundary and those properties outside the growth boundary, and this is another question that's in the chat, uh, was largely recommended for simplicity sake. It's not to say it can't be changed. But if we were talking about, uh, you know, the urbanized area or the area outside the urbanized area, there are complications with, under that scenario where you've got, uh, properties that are inside as well as outside that do and don't have, uh, maybe the more, uh, costly stormwater infrastructure. So it was, it was tricky because, uh, you know, for the stormwater advisory committee and for staff and the consultants to really be able to divide the growth area and the non-growth area, the regional growth boundary made sense. It was the simplest way to carve, uh, the two out. And after some lengthy discussion, it was, it was decided by the advisory committee or recommended by the advisory committee that we would propose moving ahead with that as opposed to parsing out individual areas. I'm going to get back to that question and give, uh, Ron or Dave or Elizabeth a chance to, to fill in the blanks or anything that, um, I didn't appropriately describe. But you can see here, and this is for fiscal year 2021, under these various models, this is here with the, um, kind of downward arrow is an eventual phasing of our capital projects from the transportation improvement fund and the capital reserve fund into the stormwater fund. So we wouldn't do it all at once. We would do it over time without establishing, or excuse me, with, um, Dave, help me out here. What's this? What's this orange X? I'm drawing a blank.
Oh, that's, that's, um, pipe lining, um,
In and out, the sinking, the sinking fund, right?
That's without the equipment.
Without establishing the sinking fund. So, and then you see in this, in this middle line would be no, no TIF or capital reserve. So everything covered under the Stormwater Fund. And we do establish that vehicle and equipment sinking fund. So this is the most costly of the model because we're purchasing equipment and we're not subsidizing or supplementing any of that equipment or other expenditures of the program with transfers out of the general fund or the Transportation Improvement Fund or the Capital Reserve Fund. So that's why you see these numbers are the highest. Over here, then this fourth column is if we established a equipment sinking fund and we continued to supplement from the Transportation Improvement Fund and we continue to supplement from the, the Capital Reserve Fund. And then lastly would be no sinking fund. And this is the lowest of the fee structures and we continue to supplement from our other, our funds. So it's complicated. We will put this up on the website for you to get a chance to look forward or look at it. But if you're a single family residential unit, depending on whether you're inside the growth boundary or outside the growth boundary, if you're outside, you'll be looking at this number on the bottom. If you're inside the growth boundary, you'll be looking at this number on the top. That would be your proposed annual fee under each of these expenditures or each of these categories, rather. So the lowest, sorry. The lowest under the ERU model, if you lived outside the growth boundary would be $32 per year. If you're inside, 57 per year. When the high end would be $109 per year inside the growth boundary, outside would be $51 per year. So that's under the equivalent residential unit model. Under the thousand square foot model, it's a very similar arrangement. And you can, you know, you can see what the, the proposal is and how it's impacted over the eight years. Dave also showed you a table, I believe it's later on here. Let me see if I can zoom down to it quick. Yeah, right here where you can get, where'd it go? Yeah, where you can get exact rates over those fiscal years under those various models. So essentially, and we're gonna do this work for you, and that's part of the, the, the reason for having this meeting tonight. Like to be able to take whatever this billing unit is and then multiply it by these numbers here on this spreadsheet, the number of billing units. And that will get you your exact fee. So you see the ERUs in the second column here are all ones because these are all single family residences, residences. Under the thousand square foot model, you may have residences that have more impervious area. So in this case, this first property here would be four billing units. So, you know, it's, it's, that's really the, the differentiation between the two billing unit, the proposed billing models. And you would simply take whatever that number is that's, you know, arrived at or recommended tonight, multiplied by your number of billing units. And you would arrive at, at what your annual fee would be. So if we can put this off, we can tabulate these, once we have some direction tonight, put them in a column that we can, you know, in this column that you can just simply look up your tax parcel ID. My goal is to be able to present all this information in a way that you can look at and tell exactly what your fee would be next year and extrapolate through the first seven years of the, you know, seven years of the program. Anybody have anything else to add to that?
Dave, I, it's Laura. Somebody had also asked, where is the growth area? Do we have a map that we can point folks to to show where the growth area versus non-growth area would be?
Yes, we do. We make it available on our website. I believe it's also on the Stormwater tab or it's in that, that, the Stormwater Resource page. So you can see, you know, graphically whether your property falls inside the regional growth boundary or outside the regional growth. That is a, that's a boundary line as established by the Center Region Comprehensive Plan in the Center Region Council of Governments. And it's part of that 10-year, that 10-year update, which will be due for an update now just in a couple of years, believe it or not.
This presentation will be available on the webpage after tonight also. So that's one of the reasons I put a lot of reference material in here. Because if somebody remembers, you know, seeing one of these tables tonight and can't remember where to find it, if they can grab this presentation, it'll, it'll be there.
Thank you. I'm gonna go down into, I'm gonna go into the other.
I just wanted to point out one thing on that table you showed with the number of ERUs.
Oh, sure.
Number of square feet. That when you're doing that comparison, because the first time I looked at it, I was a little confused on it. The number, when you look at a number of square feet. Or the, the fee is actually for each number there between a third and a quarter of what it'd be of one ERU. Because our, I guess our ERU is about 3,500, is that the number? So if you have one unit under the thousand square feet, you're really looking at much less than the number on the ERU. If you have 11, you're looking at three times the amount it would be on an ERU, not 11 times. I just want to be sure that's clear.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the chat. I see if, if, if I could just request that you use the Q and A feature to ask questions. It's this way, I don't have to monitor the chat and the, and the Q and A. But I'll get, I'll get to the chat because I see we have a couple of questions in there too. The question is, if, if Ferguson Township Public Works Department's responsibilities relevant to stormwater management include street sweeping, concrete curb and inlet repairs, ditch grading, stormwater pipe repairs, maintenance of township-owned stormwater basins and BMPs. Number one, why are we entertaining an assessment on residential owners? What is unique about Ferguson Township that it needs to take on this project and levy this fee before working with neighboring municipalities? And three, if this project is necessary, what actions have been made, have made it necessary? And who primarily bears the burdens of a new fee? Does anybody wanna go through that or do you want me to?
I probably should if I can remember it all. I think I found it in the chat now.
It's in the chat. Yeah, it's right below.
Yeah, it talks about public works responsibilities. And then there's a question. Why are we entertaining in a fee assessment on residential owners? So the fee assessment is being entertained on, on all owners, not just residential. It's being entertained because it is a funding methodology that is available to municipalities. And it isn't based necessarily on real estate or earned income or tax transfers. It's, it's, it's a different method. It's based on the amount of impervious area that generates stormwater. So that's, that's, I believe, the answer to number one. Number two, what is unique about Ferguson that it needs to take on this project and levy this tax before working with neighboring municipalities? I think those might be two mutually independent statements. So I'm just gonna say, first of all, the answer is what's unique about Ferguson? I think the unique thing is that we are looking into this mechanism to help fund stormwater improvements. We are very not unique in terms of what our services are that we provide and the needs that we have to take care of our storm system. It's very much like our neighboring municipalities. Perhaps with the exception of the amount of aging corrugated metal pipe infrastructure. I, I can't answer that, but I know our neighboring municipalities, you know, do have MS4 NPDS, so municipal separate storm soror, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. You know, permit requirements that they need to meet just like we do. And they have infrastructure needs, just like we do. In terms of, I think the second part talked about before working with our neighboring municipalities. We, we do work with our neighboring municipalities. We did partner with them on the preparation of the pollutant reduction plan that we prepared. Projects need to be completed by municipality to meet the requirements of the permit. We can, you know, perhaps partner on projects. And certainly we're in discussions with our neighbors about what we're considering. So I, I wouldn't say that we're not necessarily, that we're not working with them. Number three, if this project is necessary, what actions have been, have made it necessary? Who should primarily bear the burden of a new tax? So I think things that made it necessary is a growing and aging community that has permit requirements to satisfy infrastructure needs to serve our residents. And under the stormwater fee that's being considered, the meter that's used to determine how much and who pays is the amount of impervious area on a property, not your earned income or real estate or transfer tax.
Thank you, Dave. Just kind of keep us moving here with these, you know, dozen or so more questions. I'm gonna go, well, I'll do one more from the chat here. I understand that a wastewater authority will be established and exercise regulations over the owners of land in Ferguson Township. This creates an additional layer of regulation on residents and associated costs of maintaining the authority. What other options are available to reduce this fixed cost to the taxpayer? I, I can take the first whack at this one and then anybody can fill in the blanks. So under what, what's being proposed, it would not, in Ferguson Township anyway, establish a, an independent utility or authority to oversee this program. That is an option that's available to municipalities and some have elected to go that route. Not just in Pennsylvania, but across the country. And Elizabeth, I know, has worked, you know, closely with some of those programs and established those. But what we proposed under this would simply be an independent fund that's managed within the township budget. We would be doing this internally within the township, of the umbrella of township administration at large. Staffing is, is very limited in terms of what's being added. And I understand that that's a normative or a judgmental statement. But what we're proposing would be to add a stormwater engineer and really, or really that'd be making that individual from part-time to a full-time representative. And then in the future, if the township elects to purchase equipment, we would need some, we would need an operator or two to operate, maintain that equipment and to run it. So that's, that's shown in the program year and in a further year of the program year, so in year seven. So this is not adding, you know, a significant amount of oversight or overhead to the township's bottom line in the sense of staff and other administrative costs. It's not creating a separate entity or agency to oversee this. Dave, do you have anything? Nope, okay. I'm gonna go to, back to the Q and A here. What improvements are going to be implemented in rural farm areas, non-residential business, where no or few stormpipes culverts exist? Dave, that may be.
Sure, I can start with answering that. So it's recognized that the level of service in the rural community is less than that in the urbanized area. We still do need to do ditching. We still need to do grading. We still need to install crosspipes. And there, you know, is some level of stormwater management that's still required. I was just out yesterday looking at a, you know, a section of, of old gig that we're gonna be working on next year. And, you know, one of the reasons it's kind of deteriorating in a, in a section starting out about Boundary Oak Lane going, going west is because we're, you know, we do have water ponding and, you know, drainage, drainage, drainage is, is what you learn is important to keep your roads together. So, you know, there is work that does need to be done in the, in the rural area. You know, to keep, to keep the roads in top condition, we also need to make sure that we have proper drainage.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have anything to add to that? Gonna go back to the chat here. Let me just find out where I left off. We do not have a homeowner association, but do have a stormwater basin in our subdivision. Right now, the township bills the developer who remains owner to mow the basin. How would the stormwater fee impact this relationship? So really, the, under this model, under the proposed program, the, the agency or authorized agent in charge of maintaining that individual basin would still receive, if they have impervious surface or if they're, if they fall under this model, would still receive the bill for that. So if there's a, a developer that is responsible for the maintenance of the basin, there, it would still be the expectation that they maintain that basin outside of the, the purview of this fee. In some cases, homeowners associations, I understand that's not what we're looking at in this particular example, have, have that as part of their common area assessment. So in, in that respect, the, the bill for any impervious surface or, or any fees obligated under this program would be invoiced to that homeowners association and then would be dispersed or paid for through their fee structure assessed to the property owners inside that subdivision. So really, I, I don't think based on the question that anything would be impacted with that relationship, except for maybe what I mentioned earlier, which is that under a proposed cost share model, the owner of that basin may be entitled to some assistance for capital improvements or repairs that are needed, assuming that they treat upstream development or public runoff. Dave, do you have anything or Ron or Elizabeth or?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll hit another one over in the chat. How much of this fiscal presentation is currently contained in the township budget? I, I, this would be a good Eric question, but essentially, I mean, all of it, I mean, all of our current obligations are covered right now through either the, you know, the general, our general revenue streams. So, you know, we take in revenue, it's deposited in the general fund. It gets transferred out of the general fund into our other fiscal funds that we manage. Those funds have themselves a fund balance that's been created over time. So we don't, it's not always the case that it's a dollar for dollar transfer. Meaning if we spend $2 million on road repairs in one year out of our capital fund, that doesn't necessarily mean we're transferring $2 million from general into capital to cover that. We may have a fund balance built up in that other fund. We may be able to supplement that through other sources. So thi- this is both a, a proposal to cover current liabilities, current costs, but also projecting out into the future with our increased costs of stormwater management, both relative to our municipal separate storm soror program, which is that state and federal permit program that we're obligated to. And that comes with a kind of a myriad of obligations for us to pay for that range frankly from, you know, not that expensive to very, very costly if we're talking about capital improvements associated with our Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction strategy. So, you know, really, this is, this is a forward look, trying to adjust and adapt. I mean, the, the, in truth, we're going to need to adjust. There, there are things that we have to make, tough decisions that have to be made in order for us to meet our stormwater obligations moving forward into the coming years. Really, this is just one potential tool to address those. There are others. There's no easy button unfortunately, and I think staff and the board is sensitive to that. But we're trying to, to present the, the model that gives us the most financial stability over time. But right now, what you see in the budget is covering our obligations. It's just that that is under duress and is being threatened over time, not just by stormwater obligations, but frankly, by all of our other obligations. What's proposed as a stormwater fee gives the, the township the ability to assess based on impact as opposed to just, you know, general real estate tax or earned income tax, which don't have any direct bearing or relationship to our stormwater mitigation efforts and our stormwater program. So this is mostly a proposition of equity. How do we best and most fairly assess for these obligations or address these obligations? Anybody wanna add or revise or subtract, divide?
I think just for additional information, folks may be able to refer to the Ferguson Cost to Service Program that is one of the reference documents that I mentioned earlier. And it does, in general terms, try to capture some of the existing operational costs, proposed operational costs.
Thank you, Dave. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna pivot back to the chat here. And why is this burden on property owners now? Is not this county one of the highest taxed in the region? And are we just going to add another tax? Just, and I know that this, I, I know you may say, well, it doesn't matter what's in a name. That there is a distinct difference between a stormwater fee and a tax. And our taxation ability as a municipality is limited to things that, you know, real estate values, assessed values, property transfer values, earned income tax, local services tax, which is assessed on employees that reside in the township. So, you know, it's, this is, this is, and often I think it's kind of in a derogatory way referred to as a rain tax. But this is, this is truly a separate assessment. And, and there's reasons that that's important because the, the meaning of a stormwater fee versus a general tax increase has implications on who pays, right? So if you're a tax exempt organization, I'll use Ferguson Township as an example for that. If there was, if this, if this fee, and it could be, and I'm not suggesting it should or shouldn't be, but if it were, these mandates were covered by a general tax increase, we wouldn't be obligated under them. We're a tax exempt organization, as is Penn State University, as are, you know, several other businesses or tax exempt organizations throughout the township. Under a stormwater fee, our bill, in fact, we, we would have the property that is the second highest assessed, which would be Tudak Park in terms of, of impervious surface. So we would have a substantial bill to pay into this stormwater fund. So there's, there's some significant differences between a tax and a stormwater fee. I know it's all money and it, and it may not, you know, ultimately matter in, in the end, in the true sense, but. you know, ultimately matter in the end, in the true sense, but why is this burden showing up for property owners right now? I think we addressed some of that in our previous responses. Does anybody have anything that you want to add to that? Okay. The stormwater flows from one township to the other. Yes, that is absolutely correct. I don't know, maybe Ron or Dave, do you want to spend a minute just talking about how we, you know, stormwater does not respect municipal boundaries, and, you know, what variables, I guess, were considered to address some of that?
It's true, stormwater flows across municipal boundaries. It's also true that the typical meter that's set up when you're looking at a stormwater fee is the amount of impervious area. So, I think they're both true statements. We do work with our neighboring municipalities and on issues across borders. Right now, the township is, you know, looking into and considering the fee is, you know, one method to pay for stormwater-related issues, and it's based on impervious coverage. So, I think both statements are true. It's probably the best answer I have at the moment for that.
No, that's fair enough. Appreciate that. I'm gonna move back to the Q and A here. Our homeowner association invested considerable money in solving our stormwater drainage issue and constructing our own best management practice. That was the substantial cause of neighboring properties at a higher, that was substantial because, excuse me, of neighboring properties at a higher elevation immediately above us. We were not able to get any help with those costs from Ferguson Township or the Public Works Department, so we footed the entire bill on multiple occasions until it was solved several years ago. And as an association with shared facilities, we have a considerable amount of impermeable surfaces, and yet Ferguson wants to implement a fee on everyone, even those of us who solve their own stormwater drainage and sediment issues. A calculation based just on square footage or impervious surfaces is unfair to groups like us. What can the board do to give credit to associations who have already footed this bill? Anybody want to jump on that?
One way to answer it would be through discussions of the credit program. So, there are credits available for post-construction stormwater management. You know, those are facilities that address quantity or quality of stormwater or infiltration, may or may not go above, you know, the township requirements. You know, oftentimes, when we investigate stormwater-related matters, perhaps, you know, like the one you're referencing, and I don't know which one this is in particular, you know, there are times when the township does have already over, you know, issues or problems at hand, and then there are times when they are matters between, you know, private property owners that are more of a civil nature. But the division land development process, you know, is designed to try to address stormwater issues for new developments. And I think that's, that's all I had on that.
Could I add that in the credit discretion with the advisory committee? This, the issue of having invested in and maintained and managed your systems is certainly an important consideration that was given around those post-development controls, and I know we throw around jargon all the time, but we're really talking about facilities like you're describing that would become eligible for an offset of those costs. And also, the community partnership program is one of the things that the advisory committee spent a lot of time on, and really helping sort through with staff what is fair and equitable in sharing costs for improvements on those kinds of facilities. And so, in the cost model for the overall program is established on an annual basis, the opportunity for the township to step up and to assist in order to accommodate where those kinds of conditions that could occur in a homeowners association or in a campus setting from the standpoint of a school or institution, hospital, whatever it might be.
I should have distinguished between an issue that might be solely private stormwater coming on other private property on high ground, or a situation that Elizabeth described where, you know, some of that stormwater coming from above may be what we call commingled public water, so it was, you know, flowing through a public system back onto a private system. So, there are opportunities that exist in this program to partner with organizations, HOA individuals, to try to help address problems based on pretty much the amount of percentage of water that's coming from a municipal system or a private system.
Thank you. I'll look to the chairman. Do you want us to, I have about 20-something questions left in the chat, and there's maybe a handful or more in the, I'm sorry, in the Q and A, I have about 30 questions about a handful or so that are in the in the chat box. Do you want me to continue, or?
Why don't we continue? I think we could cut off new questions at this point and continue through and see how long it takes to get through them. I would think we can get through everything that's in there within a reasonable time.
Yeah, many of these are kind of soundbite responses. I will, so if I could just ask any attendees that are on to, you know, refrain from putting additional questions in, I've got, I'll put a bookmark here on the last ones that I got, that got in here, and if you do have questions, please don't hesitate, call us, Dave, myself, Ron, you know, the township afterward, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. So, the next question from the chat box is, can I announce how many people are logged in and virtually attending the meeting? I don't know how many are on the conference bridge, but we have 102 attendees currently, and those are not panelists, those are attendees. I think we were up to about 110, so we have a good number on the call here with us. Secondly, and where's the growth area? I believe we've already responded to that. That's the regional growth boundary. You can refer to the website for a map on that. I'm gonna go back to the Q and A and answer this question here. Will the potential fee be mailed to residents prior to the meeting to enact the ordinance on October 5th? So, the, what's, the answer is not mailed per se, but available, I'd like to be able to make this available on the website, at least in as specific generality, if that makes sense, as possible, because we still need to answer some of these outstanding questions that are described in the agenda, like, does the board wish to include, you know, everything without transfers out of our general fund or our transportation improvement fund or capital reserve fund? How do we want to handle stormpipe relining? Those are the big unanswered questions. In order for us to be able to really define what that billing unit is, the methodology has to be determined, and what the scope of work or the level of service also has to be finalized. So, even though the board's not being asked to say yes or no to a fee tonight, of course, we do need to get some further clarification on some of those outstanding issues in order for us to be able to provide that information, but the intention is, yes, we would, we would work to provide that information, so you can look it up and see, you know, at least as specific as possible, what your next year's fee would look like. I will stay in the Q and A, if nobody has anything to add. This is a question that I believe we've addressed before, but just to maybe expand on it. It's why are neighborhoods that have curbing outside the regional growth boundary not considered for the higher fee structure being proposed? Why was the service area changed from this methodology? In other words, early on, the consideration was to look at curbed streets as kind of our measuring stick to evaluate whether you were inside or outside that higher service area. Ron, maybe, or Elizabeth, or Dave, do you want to expand on why the proposal, not to say we couldn't change this, but why the proposal is to look at this on the basis of the regional growth boundary?
When we created that delineation based on very complex analysis of the type of infrastructure, what we discovered was that two parcels sitting side by side with the same amount of impervious area and the same features, but had a different pipe in front of them would pay dramatically different charges when, in fact, they are very similar and placing equal kinds of demand on the public system. And so, we kept running into that as a potential problem. We took a step back then and said, what then becomes the most logical definition of a more densely populated area with more sophisticated infrastructure? And it was the township that really recommended, both to our consultant team and to the advisory committee, that the growth boundaries were much more appropriate in the definitions that would be used for assigning cost to those two areas. Did I summarize that well enough, Ron?
Yeah, I think if I would kind of just put a big-picture result on that, it would be that the growth boundary simplified what came to be a complex system that created more problems than it seemed to solve. And the growth boundary seemed to be a close approximation to the systems that require more maintenance and not. It's not perfect, but it's probably better than the initial methodology that came up with respects to curbed streets, private streets, penthouse streets, recall that original methodology. If a property was along a state highway, it was in a lower service area because it's a state road and not a township road. And that's where we started to see a lot of issues and problems with respect to parity, primarily in the growth boundary.
Thank you. Can a parcel have a partial ERU, equivalent residential unit? Many residential homes are less than 3,000 square feet. In particular, rounding up all homes to 3,000 puts a higher burden on lower-income households with smaller homes. Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to take that one. Can you do a partial ERU?
No, and and again, not the way that we set it up. It's not set up that way, right? So, one of the principal features of using the equivalent residential unit strategy is that all single-family detached residential pay one billing unit. So, there indeed was some significant discussion with the advisory committee, which is why this decision is really elevated to the board to consider which rate structure to use. Because of that very point, when you establish a body of rate payers that would include all like properties in that definition, and that their billing unit is one, you create degrees of inequity within that population, within that group of single-family homes, because there are small homes. There are also in Ferguson some very large homes with not only their living space, but a lot of paved area, outbuildings, those kinds of things that are pushing those numbers way above the 3,000-square-foot billing unit. So, it is an issue. It is always the one that comes up when communities are looking at the selection between a fixed square footage, like 1,000 square feet is a billing unit, versus all single-family residential's being placed in a equal bucket of one. And that's really the important principle that is being asked for the board's input.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, the next question, I'm gonna go back to the chat here. How have other local townships handled these costs and issues? It's a good question, and it's really, it kind of spans the gamut. So, we are by no means, you know, early adopters of this fee structure, even in Pennsylvania, and certainly not nationwide. You know, these stormwater utility fees are becoming more and more commonplace as enabling legislation in Pennsylvania allows more classes of municipality to enact them. You know, Elizabeth's worked with quite a few in Pennsylvania, as well as other states around the country. Different municipalities have different obligations. Some communities do not have MS4 permit requirements, meaning they don't have these kinds of cost obligations that are associated with state and federal mandates. Some communities don't have, you know, their ordinances may be very different. They don't have the same kinds of infrastructure to maintain. More rural communities may have, you know, may not have stormpipes or inlets and more urban infrastructure. But you also see some, you know, boroughs and cities that have significantly more impervious surface than the township as well, whose cost burden is exponentially higher than ours. So, you know, it's hard to say, how have other local townships handled these costs? Because it probably ranges from, I'll use our colleague's White Township as an example. White Township does not have any taxation. They handle all of their costs through the assessment of fees like this. So, you know, instead of getting a real estate tax bill, you get a bill for your stormwater, you get a bill for your sanitary sewer management, you get a bill for your potable drinking water and the other services that are provided. So, you know, you can even see just, you know, within Pennsylvania, how broad-brushed different municipalities handle their cost obligations. I've lived on a fixed income since 2003 and keep a tight budget. If the fee model is approved, how often will the fee increase? Elizabeth, do you want to give a general description? I know you've answered this question before.
The, it really is, yes, it really is a policy decision, again, on managing the rate and managing the program. So, the rate will follow the demand for services and changes in service levels. It will follow the need for improvements that need to be made to the capital portion of the project. So, it's, it is up to the township annually to look at the budget, determine what the needs are for that next coming fiscal year, and each year, these fees would be reviewed and determined. So, it's not easy to predict exactly where it's going. The cost model is based on a program of services that we discussed at length with the folks on staff, as well as the advisory committee, on how to best grow over time to create a sustainable drainage management program. And it really is the principle of sustainability, I think, that staff is committed to, and I think that was one of the probably overarching themes that came through the advisory committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. That's a good answer. How will residents be able to show they've already dealt with runoff from impervious areas to those who are not given, to those areas are not given a fee? So, how will residents be able to show how they've already dealt with runoff from impervious areas to those areas are not given a fee? So, those areas are not given a fee. And I don't know, so I guess this would be a question of sort of retroactively looking at improvements that were made to certain areas that may reduce impervious. I think generally, the answer to the question is kind of, it depends. So, if you put in a stormwater management facility or a, you know, rain garden or bioswale, or whatever it might be, or you've reduced impervious, or, you know, something along those lines, it would still be eligible for a continual credit. You would just be going through that credit program, and you would be certifying that you indeed have that. And what's being proposed, and the credit system, the credit policy manual is not finalized yet, will be prior to the imposition of the fee. But what would be proposed would be that you would self-certify for the things that you've done, and, you know, to improve management on your own parcel. That would be subject to, you know, periodic inspection, not, you know, necessarily regular or anything like that, but as resources permit or randomly to ensure that that credit that you're taking advantage of is something that you indeed have and is operational and functioning as designed. I think that gets at the crux of the question. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
I think the credit program is probably the best way to address it.
Right, thank you. What capital projects are required, and what is the cost of these projects to meet the MS4 permit requirements by 2025? I think this is mostly a specific question related to our Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction strategy, but presumably maybe other MS4-related obligations in this permit cycle. Ron, do you want to give an approximation of that?
The way the question's phrased, it does sound like just the capital projects, so that the actual BNP's that would have to be constructed in order to meet our pollution reduction requirements under the PRP. And I'd love to give you an exact number on that at this point, but I would say that would be premature. So, we're just now, since we've got our permit approved in June, now starting to look at and evaluate what types of projects that we can complete in order to meet the requirements of the PRP. I don't recall the numbers that we've been I don't recall the numbers that we've included in the capital improvement program. Maybe Dave has those off the top of his head, but those are kind of estimations at this point, because we haven't even started on the design of the projects, what we might need to acquire with respect to rights, right of way easements, etc., to construct the projects as well as the cost for those. But Dave, do you have that number handy, what we will put in as a placeholder?
I am looking at the CIP spreadsheet, so it it varies from, say, 150,000 in 2021 to fifth 75,000 in 2022, projecting easement acquisition and construction pro costs that vary from year from 250,000 in the following year to 50,000 in 2025, but those are all built on that those are projections based on projects that were proposed in the pollutant reduction plan by our consultant. They all need to be designed, put out the bid and constructed. So they are all estimates in the CIP, Capital Improvement Program, based on projects or estimates by our consultant NTM when they paired our PRP pollutant reduction plan for our MS four permit.
Thank you. Is it true that the proposed fee structure on average is equivalent to a 100% increase in real estate taxes? No, I do not believe that's true. What what we've shown with our, depending on, of course, the model that that is elected, if the fee is enacted, it would translate to depending on on, you know, again, that the level of service, it would, we would translate that to a we could translate that to a millage increase in real estate taxes, but it would not be a 100% increase, particularly for single family residential properties. I suppose that is a is a scalable answer, depending on whether the property is commercial with significant impervious area and maybe a magnitude of equivalent residential units or a magnitude of billing units in the case of the thousand square feet model. And so you could probably approach, depending on the property in question, a significant percentage of real estate tax increase versus if you're just specifically referencing a single family residential property, where depending on what the billing model is that's elected, you know, if if the fee is enacted, could range anywhere from, you know, $32 a year, as high as $164 per year. So, you know, whatever that would translate to in in millage. We did have some examples to show. I don't know what happened with our our finance director, if he wasn't able to join the call. He was, he had a few things that were ready. We'll make available on the website to identify what the real estate tax increase implications would look like to cover, you know, our costs moving ahead, if that were the way that was elected, the route the board elected to to proceed. Let me look at the chat here again. What percent on average, what is the average percent co-mingled water in the township? I think that means, you know, public water and runoff and private runoff. I don't know that we have an average percent. Does anybody have an answer? Probably couldn't respond to that with any
I wouldn't have a good call on that per se, but if somebody has a specific question in a specific location, if they want to follow up those after the meeting, we can try to do that analysis.
This is a comment from in the chat box with with such a large variable in property size and layout within the growth boundary, I would think it'd be much more fair to our residents to have a more diverse breakdown than simply putting everyone into either the growth or non-growth area. There are lots of properties that have been designed, built and graded with stormwater and MS four BMPs, best management practices already taken into consideration. Also, most do not have underground storm pipes on them. Let's see, I think this is this, well, let me go back to the Q and A box. Property values are often closely connected with the square footage of built space and property taxes with property value. How is this not a tax? Fees are usually in exchange for requested services, not broadly applied to all residents as taxes are. How is this not a tax? So the 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 simple answer is, if you think about, if you equate the management of stormwater runoff to potable drinking water or the treatment of sanitary sewer, those those are where, you know, that's where that philosophical shift has to take place in order for, you know, that understanding to be applied to things like stormwater management and runoff, meaning, you know, really, what what is true for one property in terms of its impact to the stormwater management issues that we're dealing with is not necessarily true for the others. And I think we've shown a number of examples that that represent that. So, you know, it 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 matters in the sense that if you look at it as a as a utility or an impact fee almost, you're paying based on your contribution to the problem or the need for your development or the development with using impervious area as the meter to, you know, fund the township's stormwater obligations. And that is much more, you know, equivalent of a of a equivalent dwelling unit for the university area joint authority or a per gallon, you know, a metered assessment that's charged by the State College Borough Water Authority, if you live in in their service areas. So that's, you know, really, it's, as I said, a question or a you know, it it comes down to your, the the philosophical shift in how stormwater runoff is viewed and managed. I, you know, again, I'm just, you know, not, I'm not saying there's a difference. A dollar is, a dollar is, a dollar is. It doesn't matter whether you call it a tax or a fee. But there's some very stark differences between our typical taxation models and what's proposed under this program. Will religious institutions be exempt? The answer to that is no. Religious institutions and other 501(c)(3)'s would be required to pay this fee the same manner that, you know, the township would as as an otherwise tax exempt institution. Let's see, I'm going to go back to the chat here and cover the the pipe on it. This is a comment, I believe. Oh, no, so there's a question here. The pipe under my drive handles a huge amount of water during a heavy rain. It floods in the road and my pasture, causing erosion of my land. Is that going to be the township's problem after the fee, or am I responsible for that like I was told by the township previously? I think, you know, part of that answer is in the in what we proposed as a as a cost share methodology for best management practices and stormwater facilities that treat both public and private runoff. Is that fair, Dave, Ron?
Yeah, I think we'd probably have to look at it on a case by case basis to understand it more. I mean, in general, culverts under a driveway are the responsibility of the property owner because they're there to allow that property owner access onto the roadway. Just in general.
And I'll I'll just close out on this chat here because there's only one or two more questions that we're in under the time limit. Is there an email address I can send stormwater flooding pictures to our properties roading away year after year? The answer to that is yes. Please contact the township engineer or the township stormwater engineer, Kevin Bloom. Their email addresses are K Bloom. You can find these on the website, B L O O M at T W P dot Ferguson dot P A dot U S. And then Ron Cybert is R Cybert, and you can see the spelling of his name there at the same domain at T W P dot Ferguson dot P A dot U S. So you could certainly call the township building and speak to somebody and we can, we can look into the issue. You're welcome to email or use the contact us form on the website. And we can, we can look into the issue. So I'm going to close the chat box since that sort of concludes that those questions. Do we have some, do we have the some values for the units in the spreadsheet so that we can calculate the cost per unit? I think this is the the question that remains to be answered, depending on level of service and fee methodology, but we will try to get that information updated on the spreadsheet and available for the public. Why do we need an earmarked fee? Ordinarily, this would come from the general fund supported by property taxes, since this is general fund money that would have gone towards stormwater management and it's replaced by a fee. Will there be matching property tax decrease to compensate? So this is the, this is the question of of fee neutrality. And and it was raised early by the Stormwater Advisory Committee. It's been a common theme that's appeared throughout our discussions over the last three years. And of course, it is the prerogative of the board as a policy decision to decide whether that wants to be offset by a summary reduction in in cost. The issue that I have with that as manager, and this is just speaking as as, you know, recommending from a staff perspective, is we have these costs in excess of what our current burdens are. So it's not that we're necessarily just replacing one dollar for another dollar in the interest of more equitably assigning this fee. While it's a component of it, and equity is an important component. We are also looking at significant exponential cost increase tied to our management of our stormwater infrastructure over the life of this program and particularly in the coming seven years, again, depending on what that that level of service and that fee model looks like. So, you know, it it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't achieve all the goals of this analysis of this study if it were to be coupled with a reduction in in property tax. And if you think about it, there's going to be winners and losers in that proposition too. So you'd have individuals who have maybe a high assessed value and would benefit more from a real estate tax reduction. They may not pay more than one equivalent residential unit under this fee. So they're going to get reduced, they're going to see a reduced property tax bill is not accounted for by their stormwater fee bill. And, you know, conversely, there's going to be losers in that. And when I say losers, I mean those that have lower assessed values that with it with a reduction in real estate tax aren't going to see as dramatic a reduction in their real estate tax bill. They'll see a higher bill for the stormwater fee. So, you know, even when you start talking about equity and how we assign those costs, there are more questions that are introduced into the equation than than you might think at at first blush. So what's been proposed in short is to not decrease property taxes to compensate. It may supplant the need to increase taxes in the short term or in the intermediate term, but this would not be coupled with a reduction in millage for real estate tax. Within the growth boundary, you have you have property that is already developed and that which is not, why not handle the expanded development impact area via the land development process rather than putting the burden on the township?
Well, I I think looking at addressing geographic area that's larger than just the area to be developed is, you know, is one way to answer the question.
Yes, the other thing I just I would add to that is as new developments occur, they have specific requirements that they have to implement with respect to getting permits from the township and from DEP. And to a certain extent, they will manage or mitigate some, but not all of the pollution reduction requirements that would even be required for that development, even for those there are some obligations the municipality may still have to make just due to the limitations in the MPDS permitting versus the MS four NPDS permit, if that makes sense, maybe a little confusing the way I described it, but developments have certain requirements they have to meet. And that doesn't always meet all the requirements the municipality has to meet as well with respect to the permitting with DEP. So new developments do take care of what they're obligated and required to by our ordinance and DEP. But the municipality may still have requirements to take care of as well.
Thank you. How do you make comments is the next question, the Q and A. Comments can be can be submitted, you know, by email or by, I'll ask that we refrain from adding additional ones to this forum this evening, but you can certainly email them, use the contact us form on our website. There's information, there's ways to contact all the elected officials, all the board members here tonight, all of our staff that are here tonight. Feel free to provide your comments. We'll make sure they get relayed. I have I have a number of comments that were submitted, you know, by homeowners associations, by different representatives that were you know, both here and not here tonight. Those are getting shared out with the board and will be part of the the consideration for the enactment of the ordinance. The next question.
Dave. Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on that one also. We will be having at least one more meeting, assuming we're moving forward with this, would be a public hearing, but we will be accepting comments. And also, any comments that someone submits? Yo, Dave will forward those to the board. If there are requests for information, the board may not get them if staff can answer the information question, but we've sort of, this has developed into questions rather than comments, which I think for the purpose of this meeting is probably good because we are getting answers to questions that people have before we start a discussion, but we are certainly open to any comments after this meeting closes and there will be at least one more meeting where comments will be public comment will be requested, so.
If I have a question, it's Laura. I have a question about that, though. So right now, we're just taking general comments about the stormwater fee and questions, but we haven't yet started to answer the questions that the board was going to answer. I'm just, I'm I'm assuming we're going to get the to that tonight.
In our discussion, we can address those things. Yeah. In our discussion, and if we don't get there, you'll get everything answered tonight. We'll carry them into further meetings or try to, you know, try to find a way to answer
those as well. Yes, and I would encourage people that have individualized questions like about a pipe on their property or how much their fee in particular is going to be that you get in touch directly with staff and ask that question. And if you have trouble finding the right staff person, you can email a board member and they'll help you get to that right staff person, so.
Good point. Thank you. Next question here is, sorry, I missed the other meetings. I can, can a resident reduce their stormwater fee if they complete management on their own individual property, infiltration, rain gardens, etc.? The answer to that is yes, that's part of, I mean, assuming that there's a credit program, I should say that's yes with an asterisk because it's remain to be determined whether the board would support a credit program. The advisory committee is recommended, but like Dave said, it was a little bit of a split discussion. I'm recommending that a credit program be established if the if the fee is enacted. So that credit program would enable a property owner to take advantage of a discount on the fee up to a certain maximum that's against subject to being set by the board. What's being recommended is a 40% maximum on on the credit that you might be eligible for to help offset the cost of that fee. And that would include anything from onsite stormwater management improvements to attending rain barrel workshops or or education events and things like that. We'll we'll be fairly broad brushed with our credit policy if the the decision is made to move ahead with something. To confirm the proposed stormwater management fee applies to traditionally nonprofit and or tax exempt entities in Ferguson Township, the answer to that is yes. How will roof water captured in underground sumps and returned directly to the groundwater, i.e. not released to the stormwater systems, be accounted for? Are permeable driveways, e.g. brick, assessed as impermeable?
I can, I can start with that and see if Ron has anything to add. I don't know that we had a lot of discussion about the roof sumps. I have to go back and think about that, but I mean, if we do address them, it would be through a credit policy for recharging a portion of your impervious area because certainly roofs are calculated in the impervious area. And as we all know, not all roofs are directly connected to sumps. The other thing to keep keep in mind about roof sumps is think about when it rains hard and your roof is surging. So typically gutters, downspouts, sumps are designed for the smaller nuisance type events, maybe, you know, less than one or two year storms. They typically don't handle a 10 year, a 25, 100 year storm. And really, that's what our stormwater facilities are, you know, designed to handle. So, you know, some credit through a credit program. In terms of true pervious pavement, if in our GIS calculations, we calculated it as impervious and you do show us and we find out that it is pervious and it does not prevent the or it allows percolation of, you know, water into the ground, then I would imagine that would need to be deducted from your impervious area because it really is not impervious. Ron, do you have any further thoughts or corrections?
No, you're good.
Nice. Thank you, Dave. Is impermeable size based on the footprint of the structure or assessed overall square footage of the structure? Multi-story structures have a fraction of impermeable square footage than the total assessed square footage value. So the the answer is in the footprint, right? So it's it's not, we're not looking at multi storied structures as as a total square footage. Our analysis, which was based on our GIS assessment, and we had the the township flown over. And Elizabeth described a little bit earlier, Dave described in his presentation, would would look at, you know, purely the footprint. Why isn't this already planned in the standard budget and taxes? I think that's, you know, a question that we've we've answered. I mean, it's got various components to it and very fact, various factors to it, but I believe we've addressed that in the past. Of the total program cost, what is the dollar amount needed to comply with the mandated MS four permit? How has this been paid previously? What percentage of the total program costs are associated with the MS four permit? Dave, Elizabeth, Ron, do any of you have that percentage offhand?
Yeah, I'm trying to look to see where we have a tally because it would have been considered as we were distributing cross costs across the growth area and the non-growth area.
It's about 12% of the overall program with the unknown really factor now is the capital side for your PRP compliance.
Right, so that's a good point. You know, and it's kind of a moving target. It depends on what this Right. So that's a good point. Um, you know, and it's kind of a moving target. It depends on what this level of services for this proposed fee covers. If we're going to continue to supplement from the transportation improvement fund or the capital reserve fund, how we handle those pollutant reduction uh, projects, because you know, although we've identified these projects in our, in our MS four permit application, it's, it's a year to year, uh, you know, decision with respect to the budget and what makes the most sense and other regional interests that are involved in that pollutant reduction plan uh, in terms of what capital investments get, uh, get put in, in a program. So, uh, how has it been paid previously? Uh, of course that's been paid through our capital reserve, which is fed through transfers out of the general fund. It's been paid through the transportation improvement fund in some cases, which is a percentage assessment uh, that's established by resolution of the board, meaning the board has elected back when the transportation improvement fund was first created to transfer a certain amount of money from the general fund into the transportation improvement fund that would be earmarked for those kinds of projects. While that's not all, of course, stormwater related, in some cases there's stormwater applications, construction of new pipes, um, new inlets, new infrastructure, et cetera. So it's, it's kind of been a mishmash of different uh, funding strategies in the past where we qualify for grant projects and grant funding. We've attempted to get uh, some offset from state and federal programs. A recent example of that is through the Chesapeake Bay, uh, excuse me, the um, Park Hills Drainage Way, uh, where we, we were able to offset a substantial component of that proposed construction project through state uh, and federal grant monies. So, um, you know, that, that's kind of the, the general answer to it, but it varies year to year. Um, this is only answered, we're down to, okay, please, uh, discuss the impact of this fee on agricultural properties. Uh, farms which have a one mile gravel lane. Uh, for example, how are individuals supposed to pay this potential fee who are already on a fixed income? Um, I'll, I'll answer the first question. The second question is, is sort of a, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that we have a, a direct answer to it. It would be like any cost that, that goes up. Um, you know, we, we wanted to be respectful of the fixed income concerns because uh, particularly in, in the wake of, of current economic conditions, uh, we certainly wanted to present an option to the board that was sensitive to that. Um, but you know, those, those costs are increasing and, and you know, they need to be covered by the municipality. Uh, these are, these are our fixed costs for us that we have to find a way to pay for. And this is just one tool that's being considered in order to achieve that. But agriculture has been proposed in, in essentially in that level of service model as well as the fee methodology. So if you think about, um, if the board elects to proceed with an equivalent residential unit, I'll make this answer brief, but I can expound on it, you know, in a follow-up conversation, if you'd like to get ahold of me. Um, if we look at the equivalent runoff, a residential unit model, then let's say a farm has a one mile gravel driveway and a gravel is looked at as impervious surface. Then, you know, and maybe that ends at a home at the end of that gravel, gravel lane. We've parsed out that entire lane, looked at it as essentially a long driveway. So that would not get accounted for under the ERU model as a thousand square foot. So they would be assessed one ERU for the house and the long driveway. And then they would be assessed a certain number of ERUs for the remainder of that, the impervious area and that agricultural lot. So that's, that's kind of how we, we attempted to address that. If we look at it on a per thousand square foot assessment model, then obviously it's all sort of lumped into one uh, mixed bag and, and we wouldn't be accounting for a residential unit any differently than we'd be accounting for the other components of that property. So in some of the models that we've looked at, an agricultural lot would pay a little bit more, not really significantly, although I recognize that's suggest, a subjective statement. Uh, but you know, not really significantly different than an equivalent residential unit, but there is a, an increase under the thousand square foot model for agricultural properties in many circumstances, not all. Uh, but, um, you know, that's how we've attempted to account for uh, agricultural properties. Does anybody have anything you want to add to that response?
I would just say that in establishing the two different areas, the growth area and the non-growth area, that there was a, you know, a recognition of the level of service. And um, so that was accounted for in the rate structure. My recollection is um, aside from the MS four costs which are allocated township wide, it was about an eight percent uh, of the personnel, uh, the pipe assessment, the equipment purchases, that type of stuff was assessed to being necessary in the, in the rural area. The meter is impervious area and as Dave mentioned, one method, the ERU method does acknowledge uh, the long lanes that go to their residences. And uh, thirdly, um, some of the issues could be addressed through, you know, whatever credit structure might be adopted to, to address uh, issues that are germane to the agriculture community.
Thank you. Uh, for condo associations, assuming unit owners pay for their unit based on square footage, what would the methodology to assess the common areas be for the, the association? So uh, under the, under either of the fee methodologies, the common area would be assessed to the homeowners association and then presumably they would invoice uh, the unit owners uh, equally or through some mechanism that, that the association elects uh, for the cost of that, of that maintenance. I believe that that is the, the general uh, response to the question. Does anybody have anything to add? Uh, there's another question later on, I'll just cover it right now. It says, will, uh, will those units be essentially double billed? Because you're, you'll be paying uh, one bill for the unit, you know, for your impact, you may be paying one ERU for your own uh, dwelling and then you'd be paying separately for the common areas. The, the answer is you would pay twice, but it would not be a proposition of double billing. You wouldn't be paying for your unit both, you know, with your fee plus the fee that the association assesses you. The fee the association would assess you presumably would be based on that common area alone. And then you would pay your fee for that dwelling unit and the imperviousness or the equivalent residential unit model, depending on what uh, the board elects to proceed with if the fee is enacted. Uh, what is the timeline for proceeding on this? When is it anticipated the first fee uh, would have been paid? That's a, a discussion that, that the board um, is being asked to have with consideration of the adoption of the ordinance. The ordinance is adopted and the fee is elected to move uh, for the, the board elects to move forward with this fee. Uh, it would be a fiscal year 2021 uh, assessment. And however, what is being recommended or has been suggested by staff and the consultant is that that first year be prorated for six months. So in other words, essentially property owners would only pay half of their annual fee in that first fiscal year 2021 to be uh, responsive to the concerns that we've heard, but also to recognize that this is not going to be something that we're ramped up with on January 1, 2021. You know, we'll have a transitional period, we'll have an implementation lag that's common to these kinds of things uh, that we'll, we'll need to address. But the first fee would be paid with the issuance of the, the real estate tax bill. So it would go out or, or your tax bill. So we go out in April and then you have a period of time to pay it. You would just essentially pay this fee uh, in, in the same course as you would pay uh, your property tax. Um, what happens to this fee when work is done and the sediment reduction requirement is met? Will it go away? Or does it really become a tax or a fee that we can never shake? Well, and, and I'll take a, a stab at this one too, just in the interest of keeping us moving. It, it, it really is not simply just to address the sediment reduction requirement. And you know, the likelihood that that's going to go away, at least in the foreseeable future, even just for that particular component of this fee is very, is very minimal. I mean, our current permit cycle requires a 10% uh, per year reduction in our sediment discharge to Chesapeake Bay. And it's likely and it's been talked about because of the Commonwealth's uh, inability to meet our, their requirements to the environmental protection agency under the national pollutant discharge elimination system program. Uh, particularly with respect to the Chesapeake Bay tributary pollutant reduction strategy. I know I, that's a lot of uh, abbreviations that I tried to stuff into one sentence. Is, is li- it is likely or expected that this will be a continuing unfunded mandate for not just municipalities, but presumably for other sectors in the future as well. And our other sectors are already starting to feel it, but you know, it's, it's something that Pennsylvania has a long way to go before we catch up to our, you know, sister states that are tributary to the Chesapeake Bay in order for us to meet this requirement. And uh, I, I don't expect it will go away anytime soon. But our burden for management of stormwater infrastructure will continue. But the nice thing about this fee, if it's enacted, is it gives the board the ability to adjust year to year as opposed to a general tax increase or on, it's based on assessment. So if we have an, if, if in a program year or a future year, there's not as need, a need to assess as high or there's a fund balance that's been generated, then that fee can be revised in sort of real time, for lack of a better way to put it. Uh, so if there are needs in certain program years that are not as high, that can be addressed or it can be, you know, rolled into as fund balance into the program to offset additional burdens and stabilize the fund over time. So there's, there's more uh, under a, under a stormwater impact fee or stormwater utility fee, there are more, there's more flexibility that the township has to um, you know, stabilize that assessment and to uh, meet our future mandates as well as to adjust, you know, as, as needed and as conditions permit. So if the township has to pay a fee for township owned lands, that means increased taxes or decrease in public services, how will this be included in balancing the budget? Uh, I believe that the, the answer to that is we would look at our obligations under this fee as transfers out of the general fund. So it would be essentially supplementing you know, the, the overall costs of the fee structure with our revenue stream. I, I think that's a, a short, maybe abbreviated way, soundbite answer, but I think that covers it. Does that make sense? Or does anybody have anything to add to that? Plugging away, how will bike paths be assessed? This is a question for Ron or Elizabeth. Will uh, likewise, public parks with impermeable parking lots, won't those costs subsequently wind up and raise taxes?
That, that's a policy matter that we need to um, work through currently. Uh, paths are included in the impervious area uh, on private property. So it would be considered impervious area. Um, I believe if a path is adjacent to a transportation network, it was included in the uh, road area. So it was not assigned to the parcel. And what was the second piece of it? Had to do with pervious or impervious? But if something is related as impervious in error and it is pervious, then we'll deduct it from the impervious area and that would be reflected in the billing units.
Thank you. Uh, why does the draft ordinance only allow numerical error appeals and does not allow for substantial appeals? Uh, for example, under the credit program? Anybody want to take that?
The credit program itself has an appeal and review process. So should credits be included? They are handled separately from the technical appeals of a miscalculated bill or a wrong owner or you know, something that is within the mechanics of the bill structure. But the credits themselves are appealable. Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, how does patent crossing affect Ferguson Township traffic? No, I don't know. What's, what's the, what's the, the answer to that? Do we have any, I, do we have any projection on stormwater from um, adjacent municipal development? Or is, is that something that? Um, I mean, you, you'd have to refer to patent township's stormwater management plan, you know, for Ferguson township. Under our new ordinance, we would require that all stormwater is managed and treated on site. Uh, I don't know that patent township has a similar requirement. I'm looking at Ron for.
Yeah, I mean, so this is probably no different than any other development in an adjacent municipality that flows through Ferguson township, whether it's a new one or an existing one. I mean, they, each municipality has their own requirements for managing and dealing with stormwater. Um, so this is kind of the same as any other development that's out there.
Uh, thank you. So um, next question is, is it, is it uh, rural agricultural land going to be exempt since our stormwater drains onto our farm property? And we did not allow the growth that has caused this issue. Why didn't the township work on this issue 20 to 30 years ago when this has all started? So I think the question is really, you know, why, why are farms proposed to be assessed, especially in instances where that stormwater on that agricultural lot is entirely absorbed into the, the farm lot itself? And that's a question that's come up quite a bit and I know we've, we've responded to it. Maybe somebody can give a, a soundbite answer on that.
I think it's probably part of a, a bigger discussion. I think what we can say is as proposed and as, you know, reviewed by the advisory committee and staff, um, that there is impervious area on farmland that is currently um, treated as impervious area within the stormwater fee. And that the, what the mechanisms that we've looked at so far to help address some of the concern that's being stated by that comment is the um, distinction between uh, growth area, non-growth area. Um, consideration of ERU for long driveways. And then any type of credit program that might be available specifically to the ag um, properties.
Thank you. And, and I know, I mean, Elizabeth has characterized this very well in, in past discussions where it's important to note that while imperviousness impervious surface is used as the meter to, uh, to determine this billing unit, this billing model is not a fee on runoff. It, you know, in, in other words, we're not assessing the fee based on individual, uh, you know, Ron, we can credit based on what's being done on, on parcel by parcel to address those stormwater fees, but really it is a, and, and Elizabeth, I'm just going to let you characterize this as you've done in the past because you, you do a really nice job, um, explaining this, but go ahead.
Well, the concept of it being the meter is very similar to how we charge out where we charge fees for service for other public works activities, right? So it's not about how much I might use of a system. It's not how much uh, trash I might put in my 90 gallon roll off every week. I pay, you know, the same thing for my trash pickup as my neighbor does. Uh, I always use my own property as a great example for the costs of water sewer, for example. I live in an area with a lot of relief, uh, geographic relief. And so it takes two elevated tanks and miles and miles of pipe to get to my house. I pay the same water rate for a thousand gallons coming into my home. As a good friend of mine who lives just a little less than a half a mile from the treatment works and uses a very tiny bit of the infrastructure. So we think of that meter as somehow creating equity, which is what we're trying to do with impervious area as the meter. If you have curbside pickup with rollout service, that container becomes the equity base. I can fill it up or not. My neighbor has two teenage sons. Believe me, theirs is full all the time. Mine certainly isn't. But we recognize a, a degree of equity through these different meter tools that we use in the public works industry. And I hope that made some sense.
Thank you. Um, next question is based on the information supplied by the township, there's a real possibility of large, long-term operational costs for this program, partially as a result of hiring a number of new employees that will incur salaries, healthcare, retirement. This appears to be a high cost to low benefit ratio. Uh, maintaining existing operations with a minor tax increase appears to be more cost efficient. Why not simply increase the real estate tax and avoid all the complexities of this proposal? It is a complex proposal. Um, this is not, this is not a simple analysis and, and that's why we've been working on this for three years. Um, but I, I would say that, you know, some of the issues that we've talked about with respect to equity, respect to impact, crediting, assessment of, of tax exempt organizations based on their impact to the, the, the need for stormwater management. Uh, kind of all address uh, the, the reason why the board elected to look at this specific issue and this specific feasibility study uh, a, a number of years ago. Uh, the truth about staff, what's being proposed, as, as I noted earlier, is at least out of the gate, a movement from the part-time um, status of the township stormwater engineer to full-time. But after that, there is no proposed additional staff until the later years of the program. And that's subject to whether or not we elect to purchase equipment or to, you know, continue to contract a service out or whatever that might be, which will be based on what makes the most sense at the time. So I don't think it's necessarily a true statement to say that this program, if the fee is enacted, is going to incur significant, long-term uh, salary and benefit costs associated with, you know, personnel management and bringing people in just for this specific purpose. What's been proposed is really truly out of the gate, moving a part-time employee to full-time status. And frankly, that may, or that may be a, a necessary uh, staff addition regardless of whether a fee is, is moving forward. Uh, there seems to be budget shortfalls. Does Ferguson Township analyze the budget carefully? The answer is, is yes. Um, we spend a significant amount of time reviewing our financials, not just year to year, but with our capital improvement program plot, process throughout the year, uh, we continually evaluate our expenditures and the result has been that despite in typical program years, uh, showing a deficit in our, in our budget, we typically uh, beat by significant margins our projected expenditures. And in fact, in the last three years since I've been a In fact, in the last three years, since I've been appointed manager and, and many of the board members that are here have been seated on the board, we've shown deficits every single year, but we've actually, actual numbers have shown uh surplus. So you know, there's, is a complex uh question and part of that analyst, an, analysis is what we're doing um here. Uh how about cutting back on spending? That's, you know, I think that's a part of the, the, the discussion. And that's certainly something that is, needs to be taken into account for a strong uh fiscal future. Anybody want to add anything to that? That's, I, I don't mean to sound like a elected official in that response, but you know, it's more of a policy statement than it is a, a staff position to make. But um we do, of course, look at our, our budget very carefully. Uh we request a one-page letter from Cobble Creek Manor to be read into the public record. At this time, I just received that today. I will distribute that to the board. Um it will be, it will be made a, a part of the um agenda items that are presented if the board elects to move forward with a public hearing. Is the township given any consideration or waiver to owners of farms that have been preserved? Given that they have, no longer have the ability to further develop? Good question. Uh does anybody want to comment on that?
I would say to the extent that I've already mentioned it and perhaps through a uh credit program.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the, the preserved agricultural land that has, you know, uh mandates through that program, through the county's program uh to adhere and demonstrate conformity, conformity with their uh conservation plans, manure management plans, et cetera. Those are all things that should be accounted for in the credit policy manual. Not just for farms that are preserved, by the way, but for farms that are, that are demonstrating adherence and compliance with those programs as well. So part of the difficulty here uh with presenting this is that, you know, we still have yet to determine this, the exactitudes of that credit policy manual, largely because it's contingent on some of these other decisions being made this evening. Uh but it's something that we'll be able to speak uh to with more specificity uh in the coming weeks if we are continuing to move forward. Um next question, have you taken into consideration future projects that bring more money into the tax base and also an additional income for the stormwater fund? How has, I guess the question is, how has growth uh been uh factored into our analysis? Or has it been?
Growth gets factored in on an increasing number of billing units that's anticipated on a year-by-year basis.
Yeah, I think um, I, I think the, 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 you know, just to expand on that just a little bit is, you know, again, that's part of the value of the versatility of this program. But as new areas develop, uh new impervious area gets built. There's also an added um liability that's associated with that, right? Because we're going to be maintaining more stormwater management in our road network. There's going to be more BMPs that we're responsible for uh in, in, in certain circumstances. And so it's, it's a little bit of a mixed bag in the sense that yes, we're expanding our revenue stream. Uh but also we're uh kind of raising the, the other side of that balance sheet. Um and, and frankly, you know, being, having the ability to look at this as, as a fee as opposed to a tax gives a little bit more flexibility in how those kinds of things are addressed, not just on the expenditure side, but on the revenue side as, as things develop uh further. I mean, frankly, uh while we do have a significant a, air, area that's yet to be developed inside the regional growth boundary, um that's, that's got a, a limitation on it. And, and I think that, you know, the township in the coming decades is going to rapidly approach that where we're going to be maybe not built out in terms of the highest uh and most intense use as permitted by zoning. But many of those undeveloped parcels are going to be spoken for. Where we've seen it with Harner Farm, we've seen it with Pine Hall, traditional town development, future developments in Turnberry, uh the, the cottages. So we're starting to see a lot of that undeveloped area inside the regional growth boundary already begin to, to build out. I sent a, and uh there's a, there's a, a woman here who has asked if, uh for a follow-up on a question that was sent in yesterday. I, I've not received it. If you want to follow up with me directly, uh I can, I can get back to you and make sure that you get an answer. After the conclusion, the stormwater situation is addressed. Will the township address the carbon footprint that its residents are responsible for? An example would be, do people heat their homes with wood burning, electric heat, natural gas or solar? It seems that this would be the next logical stat, step for Ferguson Township management. I think it's maybe a, a comment uh more so than a question, but something to account for. Uh along with the timeline question, has consideration been given to the hardships to push back the enactment of the fee? And something we talked about earlier and what staff is recommending is a proration of the fee to account for a six months. Not only does that uh in, in, in many cases uh would address that uh economic concern that we're all facing through this hardship, but it would also be more representative of the reality of the situation of, of this program, which is that we will not necessarily be ready to ramp this up on January 1, 2021. So what we propose would be a proration of that. But any uh changes or, or any consideration there uh given would be, you know, certainly up to the board supervisors um and so, and a policy decision. See, uh we already pay uh UAJA and State College Borough Water Authority. This additional stormwater fee might be detrimental to impose under the current pandemic. Uh hospital laid off 20, 250 jobs. Can the public works budget be redirected or allocated for this project? Um you know, again, kind of a policy decision. You know, there's, there's a uh kind of a yin and a yang with, with all of these um uh policy decisions that are, that are being made by the board. It's, it's a tough, uh tough thing that we're asking of, of the supervisors. And um you know, depending on how they elect to approach it, it could be done through a combination of different strategies. Might be partly through a fee or partly through a reallocation of resources or a cutting of expenditures. I mean, it, it's not even necessarily a one-size-fits-all uh proposition or scenario. But suffice it to say that our costs are increasing in not just this cost center, but others as well. And we do need to look to the future. We need to be able to strategically provide for that financial stability. You know, for the good of our residents and the ability uh for us to continue to provide public services and meet increased demand. And then the last question is, as we maintain and improve our infrastructure, do we ever reach a point where this fee is reduced or eliminated? I, I kind of addressed that a little bit earlier on. Um I, I mean, it's hard, you know, ev, forever is, is a long uh time. So I mean, it's hard to say that we'll always need something like this or what other uh, um options may be available to us in the future or, or policy decisions that are elected um to, to pursue, that the board elects to pursue in future years. But I, I don't think that any of us have, can reasonably um anticipate this obligation of the township being reduced or eliminated in, in the short term. Thanks for the questions. Excellent questions. I, I.
Yep. Uh I, I think at this point, I'm gonna call for a five-minute break. I think we've been here for two hours and uh Dave in particular, I think, needs to take a little bit of a break from uh reading questions. So uh we'll take five minutes, come back at 8:13 and continue with the board discussion.
Patty, I like your glasses. I like your glasses.
Thank you. Maybe when you come to need some, I, I.
Active lenses or.
Uh, are you back yet? No, wait a little bit longer here before we start.
Yes, I am, I'm, I'm.
I was just.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um well, then I think at this point, I'm gonna open the board to questions or comments from, or open the meeting to questions or comments from board members. Uh we've gotten a lot of answers through the, the public question. Uh board members may have other questions for staff. Uh if anybody wants to make general comments, that's fine at this point, or just uh, you know, general questions. Once we're pretty much done with that, we'll move to these four specific points and discuss what we want to do with those uh in terms of the draft. And then the final thing will be to determine whether we want to schedule a public hearing after we've determined what's going to be in the draft will be scheduled. So, so I'll just open it up now to board members. If anyone cares to make any comments or ask any questions. Or if you're just so overwhelmed that you don't have anything.
I'll just say that I appreciated all those questions and comments. And um we had received a lot of communication via email and phone prior to the meeting. And I just um appreciated all those chances to um hear from residents and tonight to hear their questions and to um, to talk through some of this. And I appreciated the feedback from staff on those questions and comments. I share a lot of those concerns um as I expressed at the last meeting. So I don't think I need to um detail each and every item that I'm um especially concerned about. It was um general and relates back to a lot of what we heard tonight. Um and so I guess we'll get into it more as we go through those questions. But um just to say thanks for all the residents who are here and participating tonight, it's very appreciated.
Does anyone else have any general comments or questions before we jump into discussion?
Eve, are you looking for, I mean, just kind of any sort of comment, maybe addressing residents generally? Because next, our conversation is going to be very specific about.
Right, yeah. And anything more general than those four specific points. Cause we will discuss anything related to those four points specifically. Discuss whether we will move forward specifically after we do those four points. But anything else that you want to address, a question that you saw in our, as we were going through the list? If you wanted to comment where you stand on something in particular or ask questions, that's all open.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'll make a general comment, which is similar to the general comment I made at the last meeting when we discussed this. And I, the reason I'm going to make it again is because it seems like one of the themes that I saw in a lot of residents' questions or comments kind of focused on um the desire to talk about a property tax as opposed to a stormwater fee. And that's a valid thing to say if a municipality needs to raise revenue. It's a valid thing to say, consider a property tax. Um I guess there are very specific reasons why I, as a board member, years ago, when we started this process by just looking at what a stormwater fee basically even was and what it would mean like, mean for the township. The reason why I was interested on, in looking at that as an alternative to property tax is that, as Dave mentioned in many of his responses, it provides for more flexibility and more fairness in its structure in terms of being able to focus more on the problem and the solution to the actual problem. So sometimes when I, I see those resident comments, I wonder if that's something that they would see if they saw more of the details of why the fee would be more advantageous. And I would welcome discussing that with any residents. Um but it does seem to emerge as a general theme. If we are looking at raising more revenue, it does appear that a stormwater fee would be a better approach to address stormwater costs than would a property tax increase. So that's, I don't know, that's a lot of words. It's general though. And it just seems like maybe it's a recurring topic that it, it remains a question. But for me, that was, that was something that was settled pretty early on, that this could be more fair. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh anyone else? Uh, or Patty or?
Um no, I just wanted to sort of echo what everybody else said, that I really appreciated the comments. I appreciate people reaching out to me. Um I appreciate my neighbors stopping me while I'm out walking um my dog or whatever and, and providing me some input. Um but I also just want to make the general comment because sometimes I feel like it gets lost that we are all residents as well. So we're not just. We are all residents as well, so we're not just sitting back making this decision. That we're not agonizing and. And seeing how it affects our own households as well.
Okay, percentage, did you have anything at this point or? Still muted, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. No, I I echo whatever has been said and. Yeah, I have said. I mean, I understand there is a need to figure out how we are going to pay for this. And I'll listen to all the discussions and all the input from our citizens and then figure out what. My opinion will be.
Okay, thanks. I guess my, oh Lisa.
Can I just make one final? Say, just to kind of clarify my position a little bit, I don't know that. You know, I'm more of the opinion that we need to further scrutinize the existing budget before imposing a fee given. Especially all the unknowns about the costs we're trying to make up for and that we already have a substantial amount of. Budgeted money going to stormwater maintenance repair every year, so I just wanted to clarify that I am not on. Of that opinion that it is either a fee or a tax, so I just wanted to clarify that. And before we move to the questions, I did just want to ask if as a board will be reviewing. The the cost of service summary. Document that was posted.
Did you have specific questions about it or?
Well, there's quite a bit of detail in it and. Are we going to be going through that as we look at the questions or I I thought it was important that as a board we go through.
I think this would be a good time to pull that up. If you had questions on it or anyone else, if we could pull that up, then. Yo, there may be questions that should be answered before we get to these specific points, so. So.
Yeah, let me just.
Do you want me to share a screen?
Sure, Dave, go ahead if you if you have the slide handy or the. Description of the individual expenditures.
Did you want to go through that or ask Elizabeth or you just wanted for reference, Steve?
I've got through that to Lisa because I'm not not sure she had specific questions or just wanted to go through it.
Um, my question was, is there a point at which we will go through this? As a board because we hadn't yet to discuss the. Specific expenditures detail here. That whether we're doing that now or. Later or next week or if we're not, that was my question.
I I guess I would see these as we'd be going through them as part of our budget process. But but if you're wanting to do them as part of. This particular process, this might be. The time to do it.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly say that, you know, all all the line items that are described in the proposed scope of work or levels of service are up for discussion by the board, whether you want to do that now or whether you want to defer it to the. The budgeting process. These are the recommendations that came from the Stormwater Advisory Committee and I would just. You know, remind the board that that the part of the the task that you've kind of delegated to that SAC. Was to determine a recommended scope of work and level of service based on on our current and our projected needs, so. All these line items have been, you know, carefully scrutinized and evaluated by the SAC. Certainly up for discussion by the board. Something that we could, you know, if there if there are specific line items that you and this kind of gets back to that that list of those four main talking points. If there are items that you would want to. You know, specifically include in our expenditures under another. Township fund, capital reserve, transportation improvement fund, etc. Then those are things that we could, we could note and we could parse out of the fee. And then be prepared to present a right structure, church structure that's reflective of those changes.
You know, it's up to everybody if they would prefer to go through this line by line, I'm fine not doing that at this point and referring back as we go through those questions. I would point out when we were talking about, since we, I assume we're not going through this line by line at this point. Under new operational costs, there is the conversion of the part-time to full-time stormwater engineer in the first year of the program. And then to stormwater workers in the third year of the program. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, so I we've had discussion about. The part-time engineer becoming full-time. Soon in the program. And then we had discussions about. Additional labor support for the inlet crew and the pipe. Repair crew. A few years into the program and then in the later years. At the time that we evaluate whether or not we're purchasing equipment would be the addition of operators and a foreman for for the equipment crew.
Okay, so there'd be three full-time staff added within the first three years. But then the plus intern.
It would be two and a half because we already have the halftime engineer position.
Okay, so three full-time committed to this and one had been part-time in public works. And then the additional two full-time staff. Would only be added if the equipment was purchased and. Not contracted out, the services weren't contracted out.
Yeah, I believe that's the way we had that projected.
Okay, and this doesn't include benefits.
Uh, let's let Elizabeth answer that, I think it does.
Okay.
They are fully burdened.
Okay. So the two. The two full-time. Workers. Is $111,000 annually and that's with benefits.
Yes, it's fully burdened.
In staffing.
A question based on Lisa's line of inquiry. So if we, if we weren't considering a fee and Dave Modricar was just doing his job as Public Works Director. When would we as a board expect to see personnel? Requests? Would we expect to see them come in in a similar timeline? Um, at least up to the equipment purchase question.
Yes.
Okay.
I think you can hear me, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, so sometimes when I'm thinking of this. My, I cannot help but think of Whitehall Road Regional Park, I can't help it. And I compare the processes. And just. Sort of seeing what is presented upfront in a program. Versus. Unexpected costs down the road and I always think Dave Modricar. When you, when you look at. When you look at a program, you're always really working to. Understand those costs as long-term as and as encompassing as you can. And sometimes when we look at this stormwater program. I think because it's so all-encompassing, it's very, it's very shocking to us. But I appreciate the honesty in it. Um, because I look at it as a forecast for what. We believe needs to be done to maintain our infrastructure and meet our mandates. And I think, I don't know, I think it's very thorough and if all of our taxes. Were as explicated as thoroughly as this, it would be great, getting back to Whitehall Road Regional Park. So anyway, long-winded way to say. When I look at this table, I appreciate what it lays out. But I don't know that we would, like you're saying, there's choices to be made, so I don't need, know that we'd always be incurring. All of those costs, this is at this level of service, this is what it looks like.
Right, and that's, that's an excellent point, so so we would evaluate these expenditures year to year, just like we do throughout the normal course of budgeting. You know, and the and the proposed program year to bring on additional staff, that's of course not a decision that's made in a bubble. Either by staff, by myself, by the board, ultimately through the budgeting process, these are, these are things that are, these are variables that are impacted by. The township's overall financial position, but what we proposed is the level of service based on what was described. By the the consultant in the Stormwater Advisory Committee and, you know. It's, it's kind of the whole, it's kind of everything in it, just so that there's no, you know, any surprises are good surprises, I guess, is the way to say, or in other words. You know, you can even elect to, you know, be be nimble as the these program years go on, so by agreeing to, if you agree to impose this stormwater fee or you elect to go another route. That's not your, you know, de facto commitment to incurring all of these expenditures that are defined in this seven-year, you know, seven-year program plan. Rather, it's a picture that of what to expect.
I'm gonna add something and. Hopefully it's worthwhile, if I'm going down the wrong track, Dave can stop me. But other than the stormwater engineer. The labor that's being added. Will be able to supplement and offset. Other aspects of the Public Works Department when they're not working specifically on a stormwater. Project, for example, if there's times in the winter when we need them on the plow crew. Then their time would be, could be allocated to another cost center. And, you know, that could also help with any future. Personnel needs that you might have on that. Crew. So, so while it's all accounted for here. The the actual dollar spent will be based on the work that they're doing.
Could I add a comment as your consultant to this to look at the cost and and just to. Let you know that. Your advisory committee really requested a much more aggressive expenditure level. Even up to their very last meeting, offering their advice and. And desire that. The assessment of your physical infrastructure. The ability to understand condition of your underground network as well as your above-ground network. Their recommendation was that that be completed in a two-to-three-year timeframe. We worked very closely with staff and it was through Dave and Ron and Dave. Really wrestling with this. That it's extended out to a seven-year program to get your complete assessment of the infrastructure. So I just wanted to give you some comfort level that there. There were variations of this that was actually twice the budget that you're seeing. Laid out before you because your citizens were speaking to your staff saying. This is information you desperately need, this is where you should focus your. Your dollars and staff really wrestled with that, so I just wanted to give you that perspective.
Thanks, Lisa, I don't want to kind of pirate your conversation there, if you wanted to get back to this table, I'm not sure.
No, I just, I did just want to reply to one thing that Dave Modricar said and that was. You know, with concerning the additional staff, I'm concerned with planning for the reassignment of that staff without deliberative. Planning on adding to the public works. Expenses, so I would not see that as a benefit of adding additional staff and then finding something for them to do. So, but no, go ahead.
I love that you identified that as a follow-up because I was going to follow up on the same thing with a different perspective. And it also relates to something you mentioned earlier about looking at. Budget reductions, you know that we always talk about this, wanting to really tighten the belt and reduce the budget where we can. And. I've been interested in a while. To do an assessment as to see whether it's more cost-effective. For us to be doing our own park maintenance. And so I see that there's a place where we could perhaps. Take a pretty big chunk out of that cog budget and also. Make good efficient use of. These staff folks. That would be tasked to stormwater management and park maintenance and there's potentially a lot of overlap with that, like you see in our green infrastructure. Policy, anyway. I I see that there could be a possible opportunity there, depending on what direction we go there.
I agree with that and I think that would is part of. An important part of the process is planning for these things and as I've said repeatedly, one of my primary concerns is that. The analysis of the infrastructure comes after we impose this fee. And then we are able to prioritize projects and plan for. Repairs and. Maintenance and replacement of. Infrastructure, then we'll know the cost, then we'll make the plan after the fees imposed and likewise, we don't know. What or if, you know, we can assume that the MS4. Responsibilities will increase and those costs will increase, but again, we don't know what. You know, what it's going to cost us at this point. And, you know, I agree, I think, I don't think there is a lot of. Oh, a lot to cut in this budget, I think it's efficient, I think it's a, you know, a good budget, but I think there is always room for. Cuts in a budget and I don't think it's been fully scrutinized and I think that. We could take a harder look at that before we were to do something like this to impose a fee or decide that we needed a tax, particularly in this. In the circumstance we're in.
Well, I I would say one thing about that is, you know, this is not going to be a separate budget. That operates on its own. I mean, this is a a program within our budget. And we will be. Every year in the CIP plan, looking at all of these things. And in the annual budget process, looking at all these things. It's really more of a. You know, how are we going to? Pay for these particular things. And I think. You know, if we find that this budget is way higher than what we need. The fee does give a. A little more chance to adjust what you charge based on what you actually need. Rather than. A tax increase that you can't every year. Increase the property tax a little bit, decrease it a little bit, increase a little, you can do that with the fee. And I think it, in some ways, it gives more of a. Ability to. React to real needs. Than, you know, in terms of the funding. I I'd see that as one of the advantages of it, but that's.
And I don't, I don't fully disagree with that, but I think once you do things like. Add staff, you don't take them away, they'll be there and. And that's, you know, that's my problem is with the the funding. Plan with, is with this, this. And, you know, with this funding situation, I I understand the need for infrastructure improvements, I think this, you know. This is obviously going to be needed, but. Along with all the unknowns, having this overhead, this administration for the program, I think is a concern, you just, we won't lose those full-time staff people. Those will, those permanent additions.
And and I mean, if it's any consolation to anybody, I I mean, certainly, this is a, the addition of staff is. Always a very carefully scrutinized and considered component of all of our budgeting process. You know, of of the 65 employees that I have, I guarantee you, none of them are bored. And I would not recommend that the board green light additional staff if it was, the assumption was that they would be busy for six months out of the year and then. You know, kind of looking for something to fill their time for the for the remaining six months, so. To good point, staff is by far the most costly driver, well, certainly the most costly ongoing. Driver of our budget. And it's something that we we need to look carefully at in each program year, regardless of whether we're talking about this staff or moving, you know, part-time to full-time. The issue with the stormwater engineer briefly. Moving from part-time to full-time, I mean, it's it's worth noting that the person we have in that position right now. We really struck gold with, I mean, we found the, an individual who was retired in this field was not looking for full-time work. You know, this is, we're very adept at at doing what he does, a very skillful engineer. And and gives us, you know, the the. Work product that we need for the hours that he's allocated. I don't think that it's likely to expect that we'll be able to duplicate that when this individual retires or leaves the township, which is going to be by the end of this year. Um, you know, we we may be able to tread water for a little bit by engaging another retired part-time engineer. Um, you know, we, we may be able to tread water for a little bit by engaging another retired part time engineer. But really, you know, the, the potential to that we're gonna, the likelihood that uh, we're gonna find somebody with that same skill set that's needed to administer this program, even the one we have right now on a part time basis, uh, with, with the credentials that are needed is, is very, is not very hot in, in my, in my estimation. And, um, you know, we'll do what we can, but you know, a lot of the driver behind moving that individual from part time to full time in fiscal year twenty one, it's really just to address the realities that we're facing uh, with the talent pool that we're, we have. We could, you know, we could look at other options to, to get us uh over a hump, but I mean, in the end, we're gonna need to bring somebody with uh equal skill set to, to Kevin Bloom, who's currently in that chair, uh, who's willing to do the job um and deliver that work product. And I just don't think it's realistic to expect that we'll be able to get another Kevin Bloom in that chair.
So what you're saying, Dave, just because I keep, I sometimes have trouble distinguishing between things and it gets me in trouble. We, it seems like we keep kind of back and forth between the stormwater fee and the needs of the township that we're going to probably be asked about anyway. So if, if we weren't talking about the stormwater fee right now, we were talking about the township budget, we, we would be being asked for that, that engineer to go to full time.
I think so. And, and I don't say that simply because I, I, although I, what I just described is true. In my opinion, that I think it's unlikely that we'll find a part time employee that can, that can service that role. But we could keep, the truth is, we could keep Kevin busy on a full time basis now. He has a laundry list of, of items that are on his work plan that just by virtue of his allocated hours are going unaddressed or, or they're uh being delayed. So, I mean, the, the workload and I think Ron would agree, uh, would would certainly support bringing that position on to a full time role immediately. Ron is, is busy every minute of his day and then some. I don't even know where he gets all the time to do the things he does. We have an assistant engineer who manages our capital projects and he's busy, you know, on a full, you know, full time basis. I don't know how he has the time to do what he does. So, you know, this is really, this is not a value added proposition. This is a um, a staff person that I could justify uh adding, you know, under current conditions without a stormwater fee or, or expanding the program.
Okay, I have one more question, then I think maybe, I don't know, if others don't have questions, we should get to those four questions. But um, okay, so I'm trying to, if, if you take as a fact, as a, a fact that we're going to need to increase revenue and you're looking at either property tax or stormwater fee to address stormwater costs. If you're, um, if you're assessing that through a property tax, that goes through the county, they, they do that, they issue that, they're in control of that. If you do a stormwater fee, the way that we're proposing to do it, we issue the bills and we have everything in our budget um, that relates to the program of the stormwater fee that we can move and change. So if over five years, we find that we are building a fund surplus, we can decrease the fee then on our own to adjust for that. I know we don't want to do that all the time, but I'm just saying, if we find but with the property tax, so it's, what I'm saying is, it seems to me that as a township, you have much more control over how much things actually cost and changing your system than you do if you go for the property tax change.
I, I would say, um, I think it is a, it's a more nimble um fee structure. It's a more nimble revenue structure. I, I know I keep using that word.
That word, yeah.
Meaning that, I mean, you, you certainly, as the elected officials have the purview over setting your millage rates and setting your, your tax rates. It's just the process to do that is very different than what it would be to set a fee. If you think about a, a kind of a, of an analogous situation, we have the fees that we assess for the operation of our fire hydrants, the fees that we assess for the operation of our streetlights, those fees are established by resolution of the board supervisors on an annual basis. So they're adjusted upward when needed to cover our, you know, our expenditures in those funds. They can be adjusted downward if we're showing too much of a fund balance and in fact have been in the past uh where appropriate. So it's, it's a very, uh, you know, it's a very fluid, um, you know, way to, to set uh those fees. I mean, you, you of course, we want to be sensitive to that because, you know, people have to plan and they have to budget for it. Particularly if you're talking about increasing those fees, decreasing, I think, you know, you have more flexibility certainly, but um, you know, instead of going through the process to establish a millage rate that involves the Tax Review Board, you know, involves ordinances and, and the like, and public hearings, et cetera. You're talking about a resolution uh that can be adjusted as the board deems appropriate.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome. Oh, to be fair, I haven't been around here for a tax increase, so I'm not quite sure how they've how involved those processes is comparatively.
Well, just re- reconfirming the idea of it being in the fee structure versus the process for a tax change. It's kind of says it all, I think.
So at this point, I think unless somebody has something else that they want to bring up right now, we probably have started addressing those four bullet points. Uh, I think each one asks a question that is a decision for us. So uh, when we finish the discussion, we'll need a motion to do or not do something. Or if we want to make a change in what exists now or to decide between things, we'll do it by motion. And that'll define what the document we're discussing here, from here on out is. So I guess this would go then to Dave Modricer for the first bullet point.
Sure, I can share my screen again. So first bullet point that we wanted to discuss was the ERU versus the square foot billing rate. And I'll just leave that example there during your discussion.
Okay. I guess, does anyone want to start with this one?
I'll start with the discussion of it, Steve. It's Laura. Okay. So I'm still more in favor of the um, the square foot um, method. I do have a question about the ERU. So three thousand ninety seven square feet was the um, mean. Um, what was the median? Just curious about that. Um, and I mean, did we control for like an outlier? Because it does seem like three thousand square feet is high for a mean.
Um, but I
It actually is the median, Laura.
It is the median. It's the median.
It's the median.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Um, okay, so I still would be more in favor of the square footage um, rate because it seems like it is more representative of reality and has more opportunity to capture the truth of the system, situation. And I've heard a lot of diffi- like bad things about EDUs um versus volumetric billing with the sewage treatment plant. Um, and if we had a choice about that, I'd probably go for volumetric billing there too, because I think there's a more direct relationship between the billing and the practice.
Just Patty, I think I'm more in favor of the ERU. And that's just my gut feeling. Um, and I, I don't know why, I just to me, it just feels like it's distributed better that way. I think it's easier for people to wrap their heads around. And um, I think too that I'm just afraid people will put up fences and you don't know what they're doing. And I don't know, I just, I, I'm in favor of the ERU.
I guess I'll, or for such, you go ahead.
Yeah, so um, sorry, I'm not feeling well, so I'm not putting the video on, but I'm in favor of the uh square feet because I want to disincentivize people from paving more and uh either companies or units that are um, you know, people with big houses are uh, are big paved areas um that are generating more of the stormwater. I think it's just fair so that they pay more to uh to remedy this. So that's why I would go with the square footage.
Lisa.
I would lean toward the square footage as well. I think even just tonight, there were a number of questions and examples where it was said, oh, I think that we have to look at that on an individual basis. And I think that's going to happen over and over and over again. And keeping this as specific as possible, I think might be beneficial.
Okay, and I guess I'm gonna go in the opposite direction and agree with Patty that I think the, the advantage of the ERU or maybe the disadvantage in square foot is that we're trying to put a fine tuned uh, system to something that isn't fine tuned. I mean, what, the costs that we're incurring aren't necessarily based on the number of square feet because we're looking at not just the stormwater uh, infrastructure, but also the MS four. And I think if you're going down to a very fine tuned thing, does a house with a small drive, small house with a small driveway really contribute less to the cost than a larger house? Probably, but is it significant? Because I think the significance comes in the fact that we have neighborhood infrastructure we have to maintain. And if everybody builds a big house, I don't think that's gonna make a big difference in what those costs are compared to everybody building a small house. And I, I think you, you put a fine distinction or distinction that's finer than what we really could say is the cost that's incurred by, you know, different situations. The other thing where I find an advantage of the uh ERU is that big farm lane that leads to the house. Uh, and I've if we do go with square foot, I probably propose that we do something to to adjust for that. I'm not sure what it would be, but I think that, you know, it, it really is a case where I think I think we're trying to put too fine a distinction on how we're billing. And you'll have neighbors paying different rates depending on whether they have eighteen hundred square feet total, impervious or twenty two hundred, you're at a different rate. If you have, you know, twenty nine hundred versus thirty one, if you're rounding up to the nearest thousand, it I, I mean, I, I guess I, I think, yeah, we're just playing too fine a distinction on it. That would be my only reason for favoring the ERU.
Steve, I think it's interesting because I think that that kind of a similar conversation came up with the, the um UAJA and volumetric versus um, about just the mindset of persons and getting, anyway, I don't want to get into that, but um, where I want to agree with you or partially agree is that um with the farm lanes, um, I'm really interested in us looking at like maybe something in the credit to see if, if a farm lane is contained completely within a farm property and it doesn't slope down onto the road, there's no reason why they should be paying the full amount of, of that farm lane. I think we could maybe do something with that credit system.
Yeah, that, that would be another way, I think, to approach that. But but I, yeah, I, I guess I just basically, well, I guess, uh, I also favor the EDU system for the sewage.
Yeah, but I mean, if we did do, if we did do the, the, the um square footage, I agree with you on that. It's, it's, it's a pretty big point. And I think that if our underlying philosophy is to try to make this as fair a system as possible, barring those farm lanes that slope right down onto the road and have a lot of, you know, the ones that are flat and on the properties, I just don't see, I don't just don't see that charging that square footage for that and being fair.
Yeah, uh, sorry, uh, we were talking about the growth boundary and I thought uh that, that we would have different rates for uh people in the urban areas and people in the rural areas. Is that correct? And would that's not, I mean, then perhaps it would account for the farms. But also we can go into the credits. If, if some farm has everything sort of mitigated, then they would get the full credit and versus someone who has a steep driveway where everything is coming on the road, that would be, that actually would be my house, but I'm not they would have
Yeah, I want to help.
Yeah.
So, is there anything else? I think uh, unless anybody is wavering on which they prefer, I think we have a three to two split at this point.
Do you want to take a vote, just in case anybody changed their mind?
Well, that, I will take a vote. I was just gonna ask, but he's wavering one way or the other.
Gotcha.
Before we, before we take a motion and
Got you.
And it doesn't look like that's the, anybody's jumping up, say, I changed my mind, so I'll take a motion.
I, Laura, move that we go with the square footage method of billing for the stormwater fee program.
Lisa, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? In that case, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Hi?
Hi.
Okay, so that one does pass three to two as using the square foot method. One bullet point done.
The other two, the next items, two and three, had to do with um using or not using the Transportation Improvement Fund to continue to fund stormpipe improvements. And then item three was whether or not we wanted to consider establishing a fund. Basically, it's a savings account to buy equipment. Uh, so this is a slide I have up here just to go ahead and start your discussion.
Okay. Yeah, so the first point is the on the bullet points here, is should equipment be purchased in this fund or related services contracted out? I guess really the question is, should we start a sinking fund toward eventual purchase of equipment? That's really a question you're asking, isn't it, or? Because we will be contracting out initially, no matter what we do, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the real question is, should we establish a sinking fund that will allow us to purchase the equipment after a certain time as a uh as a permanent in-house resource?
That's correct.
Okay.
So do we have a cost analysis on, uh, you know, on that? Um, which one is cheaper over the long run and, uh, you know, how, how the numbers stack up and so on?
We don't have a, we don't have a true cost analysis. We've been contracting the service for a number of years. So we knew, we know it's costing us between three dollars and fifty cents to, you know, five dollars a foot to um, camera pipes. Um, depending on the extent of, you know, cleaning that's necessary. Um, we know what it would cost us to purchase equipment um, in a future year to perform the work ourselves. So um, we haven't done a formal cost analysis. Uh, some of it really also depends on um, you know, when you're, when you're administering the program as we're doing the work in the field, when we contract the service, we have that equipment with us for a limited period of time and then we're done. Uh, when we own the equipment, we have it available, we can do it uh over a longer period of time. Um, either way to do it is, is viable. Uh, staff's suggesting that sometime in the future, um, we're probably going to want our own equipment for this program. And we would do a cost analysis and certainly bring any equipment, you know, purchased in front of the board. So, you know, I think what's, what's being asked right now is, do we want to um, be proactive, anticipate that? be proactive, anticipate that and start saving in that direction? Or just continue with contracted services as we're doing today?
And I think, you know, over the course of this, even, you know, my opinion on this has has evolved a little bit in terms of of a recommendation to you all. I think, you know, initially, you know, I I was, we were recommending that a sinking fund be established and and we planned for the acquisition of this equipment. I think looking at this a little more carefully and and being sensitive, I think, to some of the feedback and comments we received, I think we would support, I would support the board elected to take that out of the program and we would just continue to contract that services or look for other options. If it came down to, you know, a scenario where we found ourselves in a in a dire need to purchase this equipment, then we would have to make adjustments accordingly. But, you know, I would, I would certainly, you know, in the interest of of keeping this fee structure lower, support a recommendation that that this be removed from the program. Maybe Dave wouldn't, I don't know, but I I.
No, I I I can support that. It, you know, it's an, it's an option to own it. It's a you always, we, you know, in the public service, we're always asked to evaluate the cost of buying something versus contracting it out. And we haven't done that analysis and we can certainly start a program contracting it and build up any type of a case for a future purchase if we think it's warranted and if the board approves it.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. So if we just take this out, obviously, I think, but I don't wanna, I mean, I don't want to us to not have an opportunity in the future. But if Dave Modricar, you were to see that for whatever reason, contracting it out, this equipment was costing more and that a purchase would be beneficial, you would just, you would bring that to the board at that time. And then what, how would you then? You wouldn't have to modify the stormwater fee ordinance then, or you would to include that, or you would just start another line item in the budget? How would you do that?
Go ahead, Dave.
Well, so just to to understand what's proposed is is to set aside a sinking fund, so to establish this, you know, kind of independent line item in the stormwater fund that would compound over time so that in the year, the program year that we were planning to purchase this equipment, we wouldn't have to budget or allocate, you know, half a million dollars for the acquisition. We would have had this, you know, this compounded savings account ostensibly that we could use for the acquisition of it. So, you know, the answer is kind of it depends. I mean, if the fund were solvent enough and and had enough of a fund balance that we could cover the acquisition of the equipment and it were presented to the board as part of the budget process and approved, then we would just purchase it out of our fund balance that's established in the fund. Alternatively, we might identify earlier on that there's this need a few years out and establishes a sinking fund in year four, five, six of the program to purchase it in year nine, ten or eleven. And then a third option that could be evaluated would be to lease the equipment or to find some other alternative, maybe a cost share model with an adjacent municipality. You know, it's it's always an attractive option. In practicality, it it becomes a little more difficult because, you know, there's overlapping need for that equipment and and there are other implications to borrowing or to contracting out or to leasing equipment or whatever it may be from another another partner. But those are options that were beneficial, mutually beneficial, we would certainly continue to take a look at. There's potential that there'd be, you know, grant programs that we could partner with other municipalities to take advantage of, much like we've at least attempted to do in the past with some of our brush collection equipment. So, you know, we we have a a kind of a menu of options that may be available to us. Really, if if the board is committed to moving in direction of the direction of purchasing equipment, then I think it would be prudent for us to look at this sinking fund over time because it gives us the ability to smooth that budget out over the course of of a number of years. And when it's time to acquire it, we'll be, we'll be ready to pull the trigger. If we're not certain about how that's gonna progress, I mean, even even in that, in that example, it's not to say that we would be a hundred percent committed. The board could at the time, it's based on staff's recommendation, elect not to purchase it or pursue some other program or or other option. In that eventuality, we would have a fund balance that, you know, in this sinking fund that we would have to find another use for, or or we would put to other another application. But, you know, I think if the if the board is uncertain about whether you want to commit to this at this time, then, you know, it would certainly be my recommendation that you remove this sinking fund from the program with the understanding that if there's a future need for it and there's no feasible alternative that's more cost effective and delivers our needs, then we can always revisit it.
Yeah, I I would, Dave said a lot of what I was gonna say, but I did want to address one thing that I think I heard in Laura's question is, would we have to go back and modify the ordinance? And we wouldn't. What would happen is if we decided to buy the piece of equipment in one year without having saved money, we might have to increase the fee quite a bit.
Right.
The next year or next few years. But
Yes.
The ordinance wouldn't be changed. It would just be a change in the fee. I I personally think we should wait and get more data over as we progress, whether we're able to do it through contracting, whether it costs more. And, you know, just do it through our normal CIP process. If we're looking at any other piece of equipment, if Dave at some point thinks, you know, we could save money by buying it instead of contracting a service, he's gonna come to us and say, and that's why we, how we got, you know, the relief collectors and things like that. It became a question that was cheap to buy these, particularly because we had a grant in the state and they're more efficient because they use one one worker instead of two, and then we went ahead and did it. And I think the same thing could happen here. Where you might see a change is the cost of the program may go up quite a bit in one year and then we'd have to increase the fee, which isn't going to be popular. On the other hand, it may turn out that the contracting remains a cost effective way to do it. And and I think we start out a lot lower, so.
Right, I like it. I like it because it's nimble. It actually, it is because I I don't think I'm hearing that anybody is really sure other, I I did hear Dave Modricar say that that the department does think they want to move in that direction. But in terms of board members, I haven't heard anybody say like, absolutely, we totally want to own all of this equipment. So since, since we're not a hundred percent sure and there's no real opportunity cost for not wrapping that into the fee right now, I think that we could just keep an eye on it. Like, I don't necessarily think it would be all of the sudden where we need this vacuum machine either. I think when it looks like, oh, contracts are changing, we're moving in this direction or scaling works to our advantage. I think Dave Modricar is gonna see that. He's a good planner that way. And maybe we're gonna be suggested maybe raise the fee or budget for a couple of years for that or not line the pipes or something, if I understand how it could work correctly.
So I have a sort of a little bit of a confusion in this and some observations and I'll say this, and the easiest way to, for me to think about this was when I need a car and I have a option to, I guess, rent a car or lease a car or buy a car. And yes, if I I want to buy it with cash down in, let's say, five years' time or three years' time, I, five years' time, let's say, then I have to save every month to make that cash down. But and then we are saying that we'll have to raise the the fee for a couple of years or whatever. But I think that, first of all, if we do sound analysis, then by going from, let's say, we are renting now, by going from renting to owning our amortized cost would actually be going down. And so the sort of per month expenses, if we do the amortization right, should actually be going down. And we perhaps should also not just, you know, the assign the cost of that equipment, which will be used for, I don't know, seven years, ten years, to just those one or two years, because then people who are in those years would be paying for it. So, you know, so then the question is, where do I get the money with, maybe we we borrow it from the TIF or the general fund and then pay it back over seven year period to ourselves or ten years. But if the amortized cost goes down, then we don't really need to raise the fee. So this is what I'm thinking. But maybe there is some catch there that I'm not thinking of, right?
No, I don't think there's any, any, any catch. I would say traditionally, the township has bought equipment with cash and been hasn't really been as open to the to the leasing and the leasing equipment. However, it is certainly, certainly an option, you know, doing a lease purchase analysis and even looking at that versus contracting the service.
Now, I was saying we purchase it, but we take money out from our general fund or TIF and then the stormwater fee pays it back.
I see.
That fund back up instead of charging it to one or two years. But we can decide those things later on. Right now, I'm also tending towards saying that we, I, I unless I see the cost benefit analysis, I don't think I would vote towards buying right now.
So I guess, does anyone have anything else on this or Lisa?
So should we assume then that whatever year is planned for the equipment purchase, if that's the way it moves in the future, that those two staff positions would be added that same year to operate the equipment?
Right.
So by con, okay, so by contracting it out, we just do, we will not be adding those staff positions.
And we decided to lease the equipment or something, I guess, but as opposed to purchase. But if we don't have the equipment, yeah, the operators would be included in your contract cost rather than in your.
Right, so I was, yeah, right. So I'm talking about contracting versus.
Yeah, if we if we assume contracting, then those positions would not exist in the budget.
Okay, does the borough own all of this equipment?
Yes.
They have the video camera and the cleaning truck?
I don't know about the, I'm not sure what the status of their camera is right now. They did have one. I don't know if they have it right now. I think they had one or two cameras, actually. But they, and they have one back truck that's operating, yes.
So I think I'm hearing a consensus here. So unless anybody has any objection, I would take a motion that we remove the sinking fund from the calculations.
Then moved, who's Lisa?
Second, Laura.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Ask a follow up question, Steve?
Yes.
In the level of service cost analysis that we're using for the rate structure, are we also gonna remove the personnel associated with that equipment in that year?
Yeah, I I think so. Yeah, I think.
I just wanted to make, I mean, that was an assumption, but I didn't hear you say.
Yeah, that that would go along with that, yeah. Oh, I see what you're asking, yes. Okay. So actually, could we pull up those graphs?
Yes.
Basically, want to see now that we've made two of the four decisions and, or two of the three that affect the rates on that, where we stand at this. So we have moved to
A thousand square feet.
Thousand square feet. So we go to that one. We have moved to not create the sinking fund.
You would either be in the left two columns.
Right, that's what I was looking at, where.
Continue to contract out. So we're looking at projects.
Yeah, okay, so if we could look at those five graphs, we're in the two leftmost ones now.
That's correct.
The, that brings us to the third bullet point, which is, do we continue the stormwater pipe lining through the Transportation Improvement Fund or transition that to the Stormwater Management Utility Fund? Staff is recommending transition over time with the TIF being used to subsidize the project until the fund becomes more stable. What I'm looking at is the difference. So if we transition, if we don't transition it over time, that's the first graph, if we just go immediately to putting everything into the stormwater fund, we're looking at thirty seven per thousand square feet in the growth area and seventeen outside. If we do, we're looking at nineteen and ten, but a fairly steep increase in the second and third years, or third and fourth years. It would depend on which one you're in, yeah.
Just go back to our, so maintain funding in the TIF.
Right.
Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so we're actually looking at the.
Oh, yeah, the, I'm sorry, that's correct.
We're looking at the second. There's fifth, yeah, second and the fifth, is that it?
Yeah, you're looking at this one.
Okay, okay, I was looking, yeah. So especially inside the growth area, it makes a much bigger difference later on. We start out about the same. Okay, we always start out at the same. I'm not sure.
So and also, you're also looking at that first column because another alternative would be to transition entirely to the storm.
Oh, okay, that's it. Okay, the first one is go entirely, second one's transition, and the third one is to not pay any, or to keep it in the.
Keep it purely in the TIF.
All the way through. Or five.
Okay, so one, two and five. So I guess I'm gonna bring us to the discussion of that third bullet point then. So looking at one, two and five as the the impacts.
I have a question. It's Laura.
Yeah.
Dave Modricar. And just in keeping with the trying to assign the cost where it should be assigned, like what amount of the road stormwater pipe is there solely for the road versus collection from developments? I know that's like a really big question, but just generally. Maybe, are you?
No, I'm, I'm here. I'm trying to think of the best way to answer it.
Okay.
You know, a parallel pipe system isn't necessarily needed until we get into long stretches, say, over a couple, few hundred feet. But but at some point, even, you know, the the road itself, if we're curbing it, we need a parallel system to carry it so that the water is not encroaching into the, you know, the travel path for the vehicles. But then you think about when we build roads, especially in a residential neighborhood, why are we building it? We're building it because the properties around it are being developed. So, you know, unless we're building a road specifically as a transportation improvement project before development occurs, i- it's almost always as a result of development. But I don't know if that really answered your question.
Well, I think it was helpful. I'm just, I'm trying to think about this just in terms of where the funding should be coming from. And I don't really know the answer. So I don't feel like I have a way to make a good decision here.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna give one thing to think about because it will affect everybody but me. And that is, if you look at graph two, the change from year two to year three, year three to year four, there is a huge increase each year. And I'm not gonna be on the board to field questions about that. But I'm always leery of some. But I'm always leery of something that accelerates quickly in terms of fees. I mean, my preference would be to either not go, you know, keep everything in the TIF or move everything next year, so that you don't have that steep curve in there. And I'm not sure they have a preference as far as the two options. But I do have a real concern about the gradual transition because it's not really gradual.
That's a good point, yeah.
I think part of the re- the recommendation from staff, me in particular, was, um, you know, to be sensitive. I mean, certainly, I, I agree that the, the increase is dramatic. I think you, uh, counter that a little bit by being transparent about that from the onset. So if you make it clear, you know, to ratepayers with the enactment of the fee, that this is what you can expect, you know, in years one through seven of the program, then, you know, you may at least, I mean, of course, it's still going to be dramatic, you're not gonna buffer that, but you may at least provide some, um, you know, foundation for, for supporting that. Secondly, I think it's, you know, it is acknowledging the current economic conditions and the uncertainty behind it. You know, we can start with a, if the board proceeds with a fee with a relatively low fee to be sensitive to, um, you know, the pandemic and, and, uh, the economic rebound. Uh, whereas, you know, and ideally in, in year four or five of the program, we will have had time to recover from that and our residents will be in a better financial position to be able to kind of absorb that increase. So, you know, the transitional argument was, was largely to, uh, respond to economic uncertainty. Uh, but also, you know, with the recognition that as long as we can be, uh, transparent and, and upfront about what that fee will look like over time, that, you know, ideally, it shouldn't be as surprising, uh, to ratepayers.
Yeah, and that, that's a good point, that we are gonna be stating it upfront, so. Anyone else have any thoughts on this question?
Not really.
In that case, I guess my question would be, do we lean toward the staff recommendation of a transition? Do we jump right in, make it all stormwater, or do we stay with, uh, keeping it all in the TIF? I think the one problem with that is you don't capture all your stormwater fees and, or stormwater costs under the stormwater fee. And so it's gonna result in, yo, a less, less of move toward doing, the fee doing what we intended to do, but it's, I don't think that's necessarily a problem, but.
Well, that was my concern with leaving it in the TIF because I felt like it just muddies those waters when instead you'd have the opportunity to really dissect that spending into these different categories. But I agree with you, it's a sharp increase, so.
Yeah. And really, I guess the question between the first and the second is, do you take the huge increase at the beginning and just spread it out over time, or do you start people low and then jump up, and I?
And weren't we saying that the first year was going to just be a half payment anyway?
Well, that, that's what's been proposed. I, I think it's yet to be determined if that's how the board elects to.
Yeah, I think that's sort of got to be our fifth question is timing.
So. My thinking is it, it sort of depends, uh, on whether, uh, well, so I, I still, um, prefer the stormwater fee to be revenue neutral. And, uh, so in that sense, um, putting some amounts in the TIF is sort of like subsidizing the hit on the, uh, tax and fee pairs. Uh, and, uh, so if we do make it revenue neutral by uh, giving a rebate for the income tax or, um, the property tax, then perhaps accounting it fully in the, um, stormwater fee, uh, makes more sense to me. Uh, but if, um, uh, we do it, uh, over and above the existing tax burdens, then I would like to mitigate the impact of this to the extent possible.
I guess the more, we're, sorry, the more we're talking about it, the more I'm, I'm agreeing, I think that it's cleaner, it captures the cost better. One thing that drives me nuts about how we quote do parks is there's stuff everywhere and all the budgets everywhere for parks. Makes me crazy. Um, so, um, I, I think I would support it being under under the stormwater fee as opposed to, since, since nobody can give me a good reason to keep in the TIF.
Right.
Uh, and there's only reasons maybe to, to keep it separated with that stormwater fee. I, I think I would go with that. I agree with that, Laura.
Yeah, I, I think I, I would tend toward moving, the, the question then becomes, do we do it just all at once or gradually? Second question of that.
Well, can we talk a little bit about timing if we are gonna implement this generally? Because I, I personally am, I'd like to try to separate the idea of we're in a pandemic and people may be in crisis and we're making a decision about the township in the future. Because I don't think that the pandemic is gonna be like a ten-year impact. I think we're talking a year or year or two impact. So, um, I think if we are gonna implement this, I think that we should talk about a delayed implementation, even if we're comfortable with passing this ordinance. And I guess if we talked about that, I would be fine with starting at the higher one. If we're talking about implementing it right away, I don't wanna, I wanna go for the lower one because of COVID impact, potential COVID impact. So my answer to this question relates to my answer to the other question, which we didn't pose yet.
Okay. I, well, I think we could, you know, that question is gonna have to come up, so maybe this is the time to do it, if that affects a decision on this. This, maybe the question of when this will be implemented is a question that we could address now because eventually we have to, so.
And, and to be clear, it's not our recommendation that we defer implementation of the program. It's our recommendation that we prorate the fee for six months to be more reflective of, of the reality of some of these, um, you know, expenditures. While, you know, certainly it has the additional benefit of addressing economic concerns in the wake of COVID nineteen. I think it also has, uh, you know, some, some benefit, there's some value in terms of, you know, what, uh, will most likely be our conditions next year. You know, given that we'll be ready to incur costs associated with, um, you know, the stormwater fee. Um, you know, kind of i- i- at that, at that midpoint here, and it's just an estimate, of course, it's not, it's not an exact. But, um, you know, what we're, what we're suggesting is that it'd be a prorated fee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one with the full fee assessed beginning January one, twenty twenty-two. Moves forward with the fee. I know it's splitting hairs, but that's, just wanted to clarify that.
No, it's an important distinction because I'm actually talking about considering a delayed implementation, which would be a delayed collection. Um, I, we haven't talked about it before. I'm, I'm just hearing feedback from residents. Um, you know, I'm agreeing to some extent, um, with that concern. Um, so I, I'd, I'd like to hear what other supervisors have to say about that and if they think that just the proration for twenty twenty-one would be sufficient, or if they're at all thinking of if we were to pass this as an ordinance, deferring, uh, delaying, um, actual implementation for a period of time, whatever that might be. Hmm, my feeling is, is that delaying it, people then just become accustomed to their budgets as that is so that it's going to hurt whenever you start it. But that's just me. Um, so I like the idea of prorating it for the first year. And, um, then starting with the full fee in twenty twenty-two.
I, I do think that people will tend to forget about it if we say this starts in twenty twenty-two. And then spring of twenty twenty-two, somebody gets a bill for the stormwater fee, a year and a half after we've enacted it. You will run into a lot of, why weren't we told about this? And I I think, I think you're having too much of a gap between passing it and starting to do something with it could be a problem. I it I think the prorating to pay, have a smaller fee next year is a good idea because we will all start with smaller expenses, but.
Well, why don't you, I mean, would it be an option to incrementally impose the fee as well? I think Prasangit suggested something about making it, um, revenue neutral. Could that be done for the first year or first two years as costs are assessed? And become known?
I don't think so because I don't think you'd be able to commit to a taxing, you know, so what you're, I think you're suggesting, Ms. Strickland, is that you would lower either earned income tax or, or real estate tax, and then you would, in, in the interest of keeping it a quote-unquote revenue neutral proposition, which isn't truly revenue neutral, but, you know, ultimately in a year, two, three years' time, you would be raising that millage again. Is that, is that what I heard? Maybe I didn't hear correctly.
Asking the question.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think you could, you could commit to, uh, or obligate the township to a future tax increase in, in an upcoming fiscal year. You could, you could lower the rate in, in the same year, but you couldn't say in three years' time, we're going to, you know, we're gonna increase our millage back to where it was.
Right, and I don't think I was, uh, again, I was not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is is looking into what Mr. Mitra suggested, um, making it revenue neutral, seeing where the costs lie, because one problem I would have with deferring to another year is then like we just said, if people forget about it and the fee comes up and we're possibly putting other board members in that position of having to answer those questions. So that's, that's my concern with delaying it. I don't have any.
Well, the only way you can make something revenue neutral is have a tax cut that's equal to your stormwater fee increase. But that then doesn't address the fact that the real purpose of the stormwater fee being considered in the first place is increasing costs.
Right, like we wouldn't, we wouldn't be, if we, if we could get, if we didn't have to raise more money, we wouldn't be talking about this right now.
Uh, yeah, I think that well, at least I speak for myself, but I have a, uh, inkling that, uh, Ms. Strickland and I feel that we should first look at budget cuts, uh, and I'm not convinced that there is a need to raise additional revenue. So yeah, so that's where I'm coming from and, uh, i- i- it plus the impact it'll have on, uh, on people in the community who, who have talked to me and whom I've talked to. So that's where I am, but, um, I do believe that, uh, I would possibly be in favor of delaying it for a year just because of the COVID impact if, um, i- if it's fast and so on.
Thanks, you guys. You gave me a lot of good points to think about. I didn't really think about i- in terms of it being like a surprise for people then later. I think that's a good point. Um, I guess, I guess it only makes sense to do it in a whole year increment, but I mean, if, if it could be a smaller increment, maybe an additional six months. Um, I don't know. Uh, I guess, I guess, given that though, given that discussion, back to the first question, I guess I would rather start out at the lower amount. Yeah.
Gradually make the change over, over time. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, like I say, I was just pointing out the, the sharp increase will be a questions raised later. But it can be made clear upfront and then we can always refer back to it as we go, so.
Yeah, there would be a lot of questions about that too, for sure. I don't know. Like warning people when they have their first year bill, the second, of what the second one's gonna be is maybe good.
Yeah, I, I think of, I think it's essential that if we do a prorated one for the first year, plus have a sharp, sharp increase built in, that at the time that bill goes out, it'd be made very clear that this year is a very low fee compared to next year.
Gonna go back to.
Or just do the whole graph. So here, here's what we expect to see as a trend.
Right.
Depending actual costs. So then, then the, the graduate, or the phased in will be the second graph. Which would start at nineteen dollars per thousand square feet in the growth area, ten dollars per thousand square feet in the, outside the growth area, but then cut in half if we prorated by saying only half your fee of the first year. And I guess my question would be, are we tending toward that? I seem to get that feel, but okay, Patty.
Says now.
So you said the second one, so you're talking about the transition.
Transition, yeah.
Zero one, and the other one you're looking at is the?
The other one would be the first one, which is just put the
Cutting it out of.
The TIF in, or taking it out of the TIF, beginning first year. And putting it to stormwater fee, beginning on the first year.
So that would then result in a larger stormwater fee bill that first year because the TIF would not be covering it?
Yeah, and then essentially about the fifth or sixth year, it evens out when you're not, but when you've completely transitioned.
Patty, what do you, what's your preference, the first or? Mine is the first one because I just think it's easier for people who really are in fact planners to, it's like ripping the Band-Aid off, just sort of take it upfront, you know it's coming. But I think the shock of the increase from the second one is just, just too much. I, I don't know, I just, I'm in favor of the first one. It feels more gradual, it feels more something that I could work with.
So my preference is the second one?
Yeah, I think Patty, I would probably go along with you if it weren't for like the, the, you know, I think people are still gonna be recovering a fair amount, and I think even though it might be a little bit confusing to see the change over time, I just, I think maybe I'm just falling a little bit toward this side because I think maybe it might be helpful for some folks that are particularly struggling at that point, um, just trying to be sensitive to that. Otherwise, it's, yeah, you're right, kind of like this is something you can budget for and, um, having that expectation is good.
So I guess, sort of in the straw poll, we have Patty saying the first one, Prasangit saying the second one, Laura tending toward the second one.
Yeah. I guess I'm leaning toward the first one because I feel like no one's gonna be in that much of a better position in a year, and, you know, this, if this is prorated for half a year, that's good, and then. that's good. And then, I mean, if we could if we could delay it for a year, then great. Presumably, this would be the same board that's there in a year. And then impose the fee. That's what I would prefer. And then it's not so great of a jump. So I guess I would lean toward number one, but like Laura said, it's difficult to make that decision when we don't know exactly what the timeline of implementation is, but if that's a question as well, I would
Why don't we address that first question? I think I see not a consensus, but a majority on the first question, which is, do we wait until 2021 to start the fee or do we, or 2022, or do we start the fee in 2021 at half the rate of what it would be in the full amount? I guess my, my thought was we started in 2021 with a half, you have the half fee for the first year.
That's what I support. Well, I don't know. I, I really think I would support delaying implementation for a period of time. But I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of on the fence. Lisa, what do you, what do you think about 2021 or 2022?
I am just really not comfortable imposing a new fee on residents in these circumstances. And I expect that we will be in very similar circumstances to what we are now next summer. So I don't think that extending it by six months is that big of a difference. I'm also not in favor of, you know, the fee generally, so I have a struggle with that, but if, if it does pass and it needs to be imposed, I would prefer it be delayed till the following year, even if it is the board has some new members. I think that's, you know, another unfortunate consequence of the timing. So I would, I would feel bad about that, but I would prefer to delay it to 22.
Prasangit, it sounds like we're, it's kind of like a fence situation again. Prasangit, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, yeah, like I'm not in favor of the fee per se at this point. So I would possibly prefer a delay till 2022 to
I think Laura's gonna end up being
Right down the middle right now. So are we then, what? If we're going to delay it till 2022, I don't, I feel like we're making decisions for another board to enact. Like even the fund, we take it, you know, if we leave it in the TIF or not, I don't know. I just sort of feel like this is our responsibility if we're making these decisions.
Just, just to note, it's not a matter of, when you say implementation or delay implementation, this isn't, you know, a scenario of just kind of flicking a switch and, and starting a new program. These are expenditures. These are our programs that we're embarking on. It's not like we're going to start stormwater management in June 1st, 2021. We're primarily talking about, you know, the imposition of the fee and how that's going to be collected, whether it's going to be on a prorated basis. If the, you know, the, the decision of the board, the, the suggestion of the board is to defer till 2022, that, that's a much bigger discussion and that I think we would have to contextualize with the understanding that we'll need to reengage our stormwater consultant. We have a lot of additional work that'll have to be done. It's not just like we're going to push everything back one year. There's, there's significant staff, consultant and likely, you know, advisory committee time that we need to be spent in order to push that implementation out another year and be able to be realistic in what our projections are in terms of our expenditures and revenue. So I mean, I, I don't know that that helps the discussion very much, but I think when you talk about just delaying the implementation of the program, it just needs to be you know, couched with the understanding that it's not that we're going to start doing stormwater management in 2022. We're, we're doing these things now.
I don't know. I'm, I'm a little bit confused by that because the way I'm thinking about this isn't that like we would talk about it tonight and say, we're going to delay implementation and then not talk about it again for a year. I mean, we have to, there's a lot to be figured out yet if we do pass this with credits and all kinds of stuff. So I don't know, I'm thinking of it more like ongoing work and I'm not, I don't really understand why delaying implementation of how the funds are garnered, why that would involve a lot more calculations.
Sure. Well, I'm, I mean, as, you know, over time, costs go up, so we would have to escalate what we anticipate our projected expenditures are going to be. We'd have to revise that fee. There'd be a new public outreach and education process. I believe Mr. Miller's point, I think is, is a good one in that there will be just through attrition or new people moving to the township or general forgetting about the discussion, you reintroduce this fee or, or you start, we start billing for this fee in April of 2022, there's going to be an awful lot of residents who are completely unaware and, and justifiably so, that this was even being considered. Maybe they just moved to the township or they, they forgotten about it or, or thought that this was a settled issue. So I think it would be a disservice if we didn't, if the board elected to move this to 2022 discussion. If we didn't continue to engage, you know, not just residents, but the advisory committee and our consultant to be able to continue that public outreach and education campaign, continue to foster that awareness, continue to adapt the program as our needs evolve in a year's time and, and be able to present, may not be the same scope of work. In other words, you're not going to be redoing phase two to the same degree that we did in 2019 and 2020, but you would certainly have some work to do in order to keep that that issue in, in the public sphere and, and, you know, have a general understanding of what's being considered. It would be, I think it would not be an advisable policy for you to just set the fee and make it effective January 1, 22, and then, and then not address it again until the, the invoices are, are issued.
Okay. I, I mean, I guess I see that for me. Unfortunately for me, this is like, I don't know. It, I just have heard so much feedback about doing it during this time and it's been a three-year process and it kind of took like longer than we thought and we didn't have to redo the numbers. So I, I don't know. I'll have to, I guess I'll think about that.
Well, I guess the, the question then we have is we're still on the bullet point three as far as transitioning the TIF or implementing it.
Favor of the first graph.
Yeah, I think we know four of the votes. It's Laura who's voting on one versus two.
Really? It's
Okay, is, is that the case? So Prasangit, you're favoring graph one?
No, I'm favoring two.
Favoring graph two. Okay, yeah, that's
Okay, I, I'm ready. I'm ready to vote. I'm ready to vote.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we Oh God, I don't even know what the motion is. Sorry, I can't.
Which, um, which scenario were you gonna move toward? So if, if I think what I heard, Ms. Stevens, is if, if you're in favor of, I guess, the first column there, the motion would be to to move all of the capital expenditures into the stormwater fund beginning year one. As opposed to a transition out of the TIF over time.
Yes, I make that motion.
Second, Lisa.
Okay, so we do have a motion. A second, is there further discussion on that point? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries three to two. So that is the third bullet point. The fourth bullet point is should there be a credit policy manual to accompany the program to offset property owners obligations under the fee that meets specific site conditions or program activities? If so, what's the maximum eligible credit allowance be capped at? Staff is recommending that a credit policy manual be established and that the maximum credit allowance be limited to forty percent, the total fee per property. And I guess, does anyone have any questions or did anyone in staff want to address anything on that before we start or?
Well, just to say that, you know, I think generally speaking, you know, we are in, in agreement in, on recommending that a credit policy be established. I know that there was a, a little bit of you know, disagreement amongst the stormwater advisory committee members throughout the process in, in terms of whether or not a credit policy ought to apply, but I think you see that consistently, you know, throughout other programs and stormwater fees and utilities that have been established across the state. I think our goal of, of this, in, in addition to, you know, being more financially solvent with respect to our stormwater expenditures is to frankly, reduce the amount of, the, the volume and improve the quality of the, of the runoff that we're, that we need to address in the township. So if that's the, you know, if that is the, the theme here, then it, it really kind of stands to reason that there'd be a credit policy that is developed in accordance with the establishment of these fees. We, we heard from a number of representatives from the agricultural community. We also heard from representatives from the business community, homeowners associations, individual property owners that are all doing, you know, things ranging from, you know, major stormwater management and infrastructure management to, you know, simple things like rain barrel workshops and rain gardens and, and things like that, just in their own backyard. So in, in recognition of that, a credit policy that's reasonable, it doesn't dilute the purpose of the fee. And, but is also something that can relatively, can be capitalized on on which many can capitalize throughout the, you know, the implementa- the, the implementation of this fee would be, would be reasonable and, and, and make sense. You know, the, the second component of this, which is where staff is recommending a forty percent cap on the eligible credit is really that, you know, again, consistency with other programs, but in addition to that gives us, you know, the, the ability to ensure that we're going to have somewhat of a revenue stream. It's of course not going to be the case that everybody takes advantage of the maximum amount of credit. But, you know, based on projections and what Elizabeth and, and her team have, have relayed, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the, the cap that, that makes sense. It doesn't, you know, as I said, dilute the purpose of the program, still allows us to gain revenue, but is also still, still recognizes individual efforts to, to mitigate onsite stormwater runoff.
Okay, does anyone have any thoughts on that? I do have some thoughts, but I'll wait.
What are they, Steve?
My thought, I, I definitely think there should be credit policy manual. And I agree with the staff recommendation of limiting it to forty percent of the total fee with one exception. And we've had a number of arguments about farms that their stormwater management, a lot, a lot of it comes on property. My thought is, that's true, but there's also a second component, which is the MS4, which is essentially based on nutrients that hasn't really been part of this discussion that much, but that is a factor that where the farms are contributing to our costs. So I guess my, my thought was that we, as part of this credit policy, establish credits for nutrient management on farms that, you know, have a nutrient management program in place and that we allow that to go to sixty percent instead of forty percent in those cases. I think that if we go to sixty percent, we're saying basically, you know, we're recognizing that they don't contribute as much to the infrastructure part, therefore if they have something that's mitigating nutrients, we would allow a greater you know, credit. So I don't know if that complicates things too much or but I think it does address a very real concern that we've heard from people who own a lot of property, they feel that aren't contributing a lot of stormwater.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd, I'd be open to that. I have a question. So you, are you tying that to nutrient management plan?
Or, yeah, basically, because if we're saying that it's, you know, the farm contribution is to the nutrients rather than the actual flow of stormwater, that, you know, essentially, I guess what I'm doing is increasing the amount of the credit for that that agricultural business operations, because I think that by doing so, we're we're essentially saying, you know, the farm contribution is to the nutrients. So if they've really done something to address that, they get a bigger a total allowance to sixty percent instead of forty percent. Because we're, we're then addressing where their contribution is, so.
Okay, so are you then saying to add another row under agriculture business operations to say?
A, seeing how this is put, I would say double the numbers in the credit amount and increase the total to sixty percent.
Gotcha. So like thirty percent there.
Have those in there already. So, but I think the cap of forty percent doesn't capture everything they've done.
So your main focus is to enable them to capture more credit, not having a conservation plan?
No, because they have the industry.
Yeah, 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 that's what I was confused.
And if they do stream buffers, that gives them a bigger, so what, what I'm doing is just saying there's more credit because for those things, because that's where the impact is in that end of the township.
So can I just ask, under, under that proposal, would that only be, that seventy percent cap only be eligible for agricultural land uses?
I would, if it's not a comp, too big of a problem, I would say any farm that qualifies for the farmstead exemption on property taxes. I think that would, might be a simpler way to figure out who, you know, instead of by uses, if, if you already qualify for a farmstead exemption, then the sixty percent would apply. And that, then we don't have to determine whether they qualify or not, because that's already determined through the county.
I guess I don't really understand the necessarily the implications of that. I'm not opposed to exploring something like this. But in terms of any property that has a farmstead exemption, does that capture the properties that we want to capture and not, I mean,
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
What would you think, Dave? Is that?
Well, I guess I, well, I don't know. I mean, what are the properties you want to capture?
Well, I want properties that are like having a negative impact to be able to make interventions to improve water quality. So, you know, agricultural operations that have the opportunity there to, to do that, that's, that's good. And I want to see that happen. So incentivizing that is good. But are those the kinds of properties that are going to be identified by the farmstead exemption?
I'm, I'm not sure that I can answer that.
But, yeah, I, I'm not certain either. I was just thinking of that as something where it's been identified, but if we're identifying with agricultural business operations, I'm okay with that too, however we've defined that. Yeah, but
So then, so just, if there were, say, like a wild So then, so just if there were, say, like a wildlife refuge. That wouldn't be considered an agricultural business operation? Would they be able to gather that same up to sixty percent? Or is this specifically for working farms?
I was thinking this specifically for working farms, because they've been making the the argument that they have taken steps to make sure that the water doesn't, you know. That they're managing their their property.
Thank you.
Better than anybody else. They are or not, I'm not sure, but I think I can buy the argument, so.
Thanks.
Sorry, did you discuss agricultural research areas in that and I'm or? Or no? That would not be included by default in that or?
I'm not sure the definition for the agricultural business operations credits. Whether we define that or not.
That's a good point, Lisa, though, because that's the same kind of property type. It's just that not a business. So we understand the intent of what Steve's putting forward, and I think I definitely agree with that intent. But I think that we have to just make sure that our definitions and what we're trying to do are all matching up in the language of the ordinance.
So is agricultural research, I'm assuming they are under the same federal and state mandates that sort of are constricting? The other ones? Because I'm just trying to be responsive to the ones that I've heard that said, you know, they have so many mandates from the federal level and state level. So I don't know.
Well, it's a good question. So does Penn State have to comply with that kind of stuff? Do they have like a? You know, conservation plan for their properties?
Yes.
Okay. So then we are saying by changing this for agricultural business operations or these kind of properties. That Penn State could also get up to sixty percent. Of their. Fees reduced by credit.
Which was actually my purpose for bringing in the farmstead exemption.
Because they would.
Because those are active farms.
Okay.
In the business of farming, but I I'm not certain that that captures everybody that we're talking about, but I suspect it does.
Okay, I like that idea, then. I would go with the farmstead exemption.
Me too. I think that. If if that can be done, I think that solves that problem. I probably would have said seventy five percent max, because we have a little bit of a difference of opinion on their, what the nutrient management plans. You know, there there's still. But we don't need to debate.
Well, there isn't a motion yet, so. So if somebody makes a motion.
Remember, we also seem to have consensus on. Doing some kind of credit with the farm lane. If there was, if there was farm lane that's only impacting their own property.
I I guess the question for Dave provoked on the this. If we approve a credit policy manual in the ordinance, do we have to get to that detail at this point? Or could that be part of the credit policy that we establish?
Yeah, the the credit policy would be adopted or would be enacted through separate actions.
So we can address that question later on, then.
Right, the specificities could be addressed later. What I'd be interested in exploring a little more deeply is is if we establish a credit program, can it be applied? Can the maximum or the cap on the credit be applied differently to different kinds of land uses or different?
Oh, okay.
I think, and I'd look to Elizabeth for counsel on this. I think one of the, you know, critical components of these fees that has been, you know, typically decided by the courts has been that they they need to be applied consistently and fairly throughout. So by by virtue of saying that this kind of property would qualify for up to a sixty percent credit. And this one may qualify for up to a forty percent credit. I don't know whether that that is problematic in terms of, you know, legalities when in applying these fees and this credit program. May very well be doable. I would just want to know, and in the in the language of the ordinance, really what we would want to do is establish that credit. That credits would be eligible or that you'd be eligible to apply for credits. The specific language in the draft, just pulling up here quickly, talks about.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think one of the the things that I like about the fee is the fact that it encourages people to. Be innovative and reduce their stormwater and and so on. So, you know, in a way, I would not want there to be an upper limit. So I mean, if someone is not generating any water that's running off into the streets and so on. I would be fine with them getting up to a hundred percent credit. So I would possibly support sort of as much credit as possible. And, you know, just just because we say that, okay, let's suppose it's sixty percent for everyone or eighty percent or whatever we decide. If we go to having a limit for the credit, does not mean that we have to give them the credit. It has to be based upon certain criteria that we will carefully tailor to make sure that it's actually meaningful mitigation that they're undertaking. And we have minimal to no cost based on, you know, that are minimal to no water flowing based on off their property. And then they would get the maximum credit. So those are sort of my thoughts.
The only caution I would advise under that scenario of a hundred percent credit, depending on if somebody is, you know, demonstrating that all of the water gets sunk into the ground. I think that is is a, you know, kind of a difficult analysis to complete. I mean, what does that mean? I mean, when you, how are you verifying, are you doing a hydro, a hydrologic and hydro hydraulic analysis of your property to, you know, confirm that every drop of stormwater doesn't make its way in the infrastructure? And in addition to that, we talked about earlier, the fee is not really, you know, meant to be tailored as a, you know, runoff generation or how much runoff that you're contributing immediately to the storms. That's the meter that is being used to evaluate what that fee applies parcel by parcel. But the purpose of the fee is much broader than that. And even if a property demonstrate just at its base, the simplest examples, even if a property owner can demonstrate scientifically that every drop of stormwater that, you know, is generated on their property gets absorbed and recharged into the groundwater. There are still additional costs extraneous of that treatment that are part of this fee, like our MS four obligations and and other components of this this fee structure. So I would just be leery about opening the the door to a hundred percent credit under those circumstances. I think there ought to be a cap and that cap ought to be realistic, depending on what doesn't, you know, completely dilute the purpose of the fee to begin with and.
Well, I I do have a question that would tie into that, then. If I don't have open the. The thing that this page is a part of. Well, if a homeowner or business took the ma- maximum possible. Exemptions, added all those up. Is there a limit, a cap to what that would add up to? I mean, are there ways that they could get to fifty percent? Based on what we have on that table?
Yes.
There are, okay.
Absolutely. I mean, a property owner, and in fact, that's what we've heard, you know, thus far from, you know, like Penn State, that they would qualify for a hundred percent credit. They could capitalize on all of these items and in aggregate, they could demonstrate if there were no cap on credit that they would be entirely exempted. It's part of the the benefit of having that that cap that we can ensure that even if you would qualify in aggregate or cumulatively for a hundred percent credit. You would still be limited based on what is assigned to the program. All that's needed for the ordinance, by the way, is just whether or not you will have that credit policy.
Okay, we don't have to decide a percentage at this point?
I believe that's correct, Elizabeth. I mean, that's my my reading of the ordinance and and. If I'm wrong on that. Let me know.
Well, it seems like we definitely seem to have consensus that there should be a credit policy.
And I think there are ways that we can approach this discussion as we do the credits. One thing we'd need to know whether there's a way to do the credits differently for different purposes and. But I think the question of should there be a credit policy manual, I'm actually going to ask somebody to make a motion on that one.
Can I ask a few questions first?
Sure.
Um, one, I was wondering if the. If the estimated revenue in the CIP, if that accounts for credits.
When you say the CIP, do you mean the cost model for the stormwater fee or?
There's an, there's an estimated revenue that's neutral with the expenditures in the CIP. And I was wondering where the credit. Fits it. How is this looked at in terms of? Revenue that you're expecting? Has this been modeled at all?
I'm not sure I understand the question, so Dave.
I think I do. I I I do not believe, and Elizabeth, again, jump in if I'm not correct here, that the credit, that a, an assumption of credits has been baked into the projected revenue. In in the stormwater fee. I think the intent would be that whatever the credits were that that folks capitalized on would be then supplemented or supplanted by. You know, a subsidy from the general fund. Is that right, Elizabeth? Did you, did you bake a, okay, yeah. But you have said, and you know. You did give, based on your experience, a general. Projection of of what you would expect to see in terms of credits that we can anticipate in conjunction with this fee, didn't you? I think you and I talked about that.
For many communities, what we see is their cost of their credit program is about three to four percent of their revenue generation.
So there you go.
Though credits are there and encouraged, does not often result in people taking advantage of them. Okay. Reason, I don't know, but that's not uncommon. I think the probably the most robust program I've seen has been about nine percent of revenue.
Their revenue, revenue is reduced by nine percent because of the credits that are taken.
The the models typically include that as a direct expense to the program rather than as an offset from the general fund.
And has there been any difference between rural or densely populated areas? Commercial properties? In terms of what they take as credit?
Now, the the variety of things that we suggested and discussed with the advisory committee are very typical. Types of credits that have been offered in programs all over the country. Some credits are mandatory and that state legislation establishes them. That's rare. That's not the typical. State legislation section, but but we do see that happen in in some states.
Yeah, I would say if you look at, you know, homeowner fee of forty dollars. How much effort are people going to put into? Obtaining credits of, say, ten dollars from that?
Yeah.
About commercial properties.
Right.
You know, what what the tendency has been there? Because if there's a large property owner and the potential to take up to forty percent off of that fee. I'm wondering what's the likelihood that that would happen?
Well, from what I know, usually the mitigation costs are are reasonably high to the extent that people don't, even for, you know, commercial properties. When you have a larger area, you have to figure out how to run off that water or treat it and do things with it. So that that's a construction cost that. So I think because of that, it comes out to about like five to ten percent, like Ms. Friday said.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mitch is right. I think.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna just add to that, that I I think the the likelihood is fairly small that, you know, property owners would construct a large stormwater basin or or management facility, just in the in the interest of qualifying for the credit. More likely than not, these would be facilities that are already in place that because the credit were made available to them, that they would certify and qualify for.
Right, I'm, the credits would be on top of their their normal requirements, right?
No, so meaning, well, I guess maybe that's a question for for Ron or Dave. Are would we, are we suggesting that we, I know we haven't defined this credit policy manual yet, so maybe that's, those are details that have still yet to emerge. But, you know, I think the question is if if they're meeting just their basic requirements under our stormwater ordinance, would it be anticipated that they go beyond? I think we do have some language in the draft manual here, that they go beyond what's required by ordinance in order to capitalize on on credit at all.
Yeah, so we haven't finalized it, but we've certainly had discussion on the topic. So the way we have it written here, if you look at volume control, water quality control, recharge, and then voluntary exceedance. Pollutant volume or rate control. The very last one talks about demonstrating that the BMP exceeds the minimum regulatory control by at least twenty percent. And so we talked about, you know, a certain credit for that. All the rest of these, at least as as written. You know, one could. Perhaps demonstrate if they had a recent stormwater. Basin or BMP built in accordance with our approved stormwater management plan. But even when you add these up, we're saying that couldn't exceed forty percent. So the fact that you exceed. You know, that gets you fifteen, but you still don't get over forty. Ron, anything in addition?
No, I think you summarized it well, Dave, and there's a lot of discussion back and forth on that, whether there should be credits above and beyond or. Or for people that are just meeting the requirements of the ordinance, but it also felt like there should be some distinction for those properties that do have something out there already. Even if they don't exceed the ordinance versus properties that don't have, have never done anything on their property with respect to stormwater management.
Do you want me?
That's why you see that different tiered structure there.
Did you want me to do that again, Lisa?
No, I think. If we're going to spend any more time on this, I'd ask you to zoom in a little bit. It's a little bit small, but.
I'm sorry.
You know, if we, if, that's okay, thank you. If. You know, if we are agreeing to go back and look at this in detail later.
Yeah, the the the, we would not be adopting the manual or, yeah, the the credits as they are here. We would be saying we're going to establish a credit policy manual. And I think the board will probably retrace a lot of the discussions that the committee had, so.
Well, that was going to be my other question is if we could have some. Some discussion about the pros and cons that were mentioned during the advisory committee discussion, so that we could hear what they went through in their discussions. That would be appreciated when we go through this. And one other thing that I wanted to mention is I'm I'm going back to the farmstead exemption. I just wanted to make sure that we're inclusive of people who don't live on their farms. So would, you know, if they have a farm, you know, if it's a small family farm, but they're not living on it. I just want to make sure we're we're capturing the right group when that's.
Yeah, I I think we're gonna have a lot of questions before we actually define that. I sort of threw that, it went out there without any previous discussion of whether it's even feasible, but I think. You know, I think it's something that when we get to putting the manual together, we can figure out if, for one thing, even if it's possible to do a larger exemption for the. You know, farms that for for a business or something like that, so. But I I guess my question is, I I don't think there's any opposition to having a credit policy. But I, I guess my question is, I, I don't think there's any opposition to having a credit policy manual. Is there? I'm not hearing.
No.
And that's already, is that already in the ordinance or do we need to have a motion to add that, Dave?
Already in, it's in the draft.
So there's no motion needed on this bullet point. And I guess the final question we have, or actually there are two final questions. Cause there was a question raised about whether we implement this fee in 2019 or 2020. And then a question about do we schedule a public hearing for October 5th? Those are two final things to determine.
Yeah, you meant 21 or 22, right?
It's what I meant. It's, we've been here four and a half hours, so.
Yeah, I'm right. I'm right here with you, Steve.
I think the decision to, I mean, you can't, you, you can, you know, wait till the public hearing and, and, you know, consider if you do decide to schedule a public hearing, doesn't necessarily mean you're committing to enacting the.
That's true, because we will not be voting on it the night of the public hearing, will we? So we can, we can wait for that question.
Good.
If we schedule a public hearing. So the final question for us then is, do we want to schedule a public hearing for October 5th?
Hey, yes.
And I'll help Laura decide by saying if we schedule for later than October 5th, she's probably gonna have to run the meeting because physical condition.
I don't mind. The rest of you would suffer perhaps, but no, um, I'm fine with, I'm fine, I'm fine with a public hearing then. Provided that we know that we can continue that if we are not comfortable.
A public hearing without a vote scheduled.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure that we will have a, there's a potential for substantial changes to it. So we might as well just plan on having the public hearing. We're gonna have a lot of public input. I don't know that we're going to have a vote right immediately after all that public input. So I think we'll have to schedule a vote for a later meeting.
If that's the plan, I'd be in favor of going ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't want to schedule a vote for that night. I think there's going to be too much discussion to jump right into a vote. So. So I guess for that, we do need a motion to schedule one.
I Laura moved that we schedule a public hearing on the stormwater fee for October 5th, 2020.
This is Patty, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? I.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Our agenda says we can have open discussion now, so. I think we've already incorporated that.
It'd be.
Is there anyone who wants to discuss anything further? I'm not seeing anyone jumping up and saying me, me. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned. I guess we'll see everyone next time.
Yep, thanks, everybody for coming.